I think we're ready to get started.
Absolutely.
Please Burlington.
Nick, we're ready to get started, please. Welcome to this, what is the date?
October 22nd.
October 22nd work session. Thank you for joining us. Superintendent Bird is not able to join us this afternoon, so Deputy Superintendent Hill will be standing in. Additionally, I think Ms. Field's going to be a few minutes late. I have asked Mr. Hill to give us a brief update on Kathleen Middle as well as Oscar J. Pope.
Sure.
Just kind of give us a sense of what's happening with those schools. So, Mr. Hill, the floor is all yours.
Very good. Thank you very much. It's an honor and a privilege to lead the work session on behalf of Ms. Bird today. I want to give you an update on Kathleen Middle School. As you know, there was a tremendous amount of damage caused by the tornado out there this past weekend. Ms. Bird, along with a number of team members, led the charge in getting out there quickly. And it was amazed by Monday how much had been accomplished as we were on-site Monday. We got the emergency services out there. Our team did a tremendous job from facilities. We had our team out there, had a number of agencies working with us, Mayor Mutz, the City of Lakeland. Our Sheriff, Grady Judd, had folks out there to assist and support. And of course, Ms. Bird was leading the way all weekend. The good news is, we were able to get the debris off the site very quickly. The facilities team was able to assess the damage. The construction company started with the immediate emergency restoration. The main building that was of most concern was the historic building. I believe, I was told, that building has been in existence since 1927.
Oh, yeah.
And so, there was a commitment made to, the community was very concerned about the building, and we made a commitment that we're going to restore that building. And so, that commitment has been made, and that is the focus in the plan. The immediate feedback we received that the project could take up to possibly 12 months for the total restoration to take place. There were a couple of other buildings that had some damage. One was significant, the other was relatively minor. So, in addition to that, we lost a lot of the damage incurred from the items inside of the buildings. Loss of technology, supplies, furniture, basically anything inside the building was destroyed due to water damage. We may be able to salvage some of those. So, we did have that to contend with. There were 12 classrooms that are not going to be, we're not going to be able to utilize. So, we did, we have portables coming in. The good news is, they are, they are coming in, probably still coming in as we speak. And so, we were going to, we're going to utilize 12 portables. We have portable restrooms, got a great game plan, the principal and the staff out there. Ms. Gregory and her team did a tremendous job. Our custodial staff, custodial service has been out there doing a tremendous job. And so, the good news is, we've got a great plan. We're moving forward. We believe that we will have, well, we're going to make an announcement soon. Ms. Pleasant sending out information to our community. Our teachers will come back on Thursday and Friday, get prepared for school. Our students will be back this coming Monday. And so, I think we've made tremendous progress. I was amazed Monday morning after being out there Sunday afternoon how much had been accomplished. They do have the temporary roof on the main building when I drove by this morning, and it looks like the portables are coming in just like they committed to us. Any questions on Kathleen Middle?
I have a question.
Yes.
Did we have, is the city or anyone that works in the historic restoration process of other areas of Lakeland been involved or willing to commit dollars and/or?
Okay. Angela?
Mrs. Miller, we're not at that point here.
Very good question.
We're trying to shore up the building and dry it out. Once we decide that we will save the shell like we did at Old Damit Court and come again and try to restore it, we'll go out and have our architect and contractor work on that that will involve the city of Lakeland like we did with the city of Damit Court.
Is there a funding resource for any of that?
I'll have to take it to the sales tax committee because we will get money hopefully from the insurance, but I know that I will have to supplement that to do the entire project. And I can take that to the sales tax committee and see if they approve it based on it being an emergency.
Thank you. And I have one other question about, with Kathleen in the current status, with, I don't, with grades in the state, is that, do they have input on what's going on there? Do they, have they been notified? I don't know what natural disaster kind of does to those schools.
Right. Ms. Bird will be in contact with the chancellor, and they'll be working through that. I was not privy to that conversation. I know that that ask will be made for consideration due to the circumstances. But beyond that, I don't have any definitive information on that at this time. Sarah?
Just going off, sorry.
Ms. Reynolds?
Just going off of what Ms. Miller was saying with historical dollars, a lot of times there's, there are federal dollars for restoring historical sites, so I don't know if that's something that we could or have looked into. I'm getting an A-OK from Mr. Pitts, so I'm sure that means we are A-OK.
All right. Ms. Thompson? Is Kathleen actually in the city? Or it isn't a city?
The city of Lakeland has been helpful also.
Yeah.
They provided what, downstairs, Richard?
Yeah.
The city of Lakeland. Oh, they're helping us make sure their crew within power lines, right?
Yes.
For portable, so they have staff out there working with us.
Right. They've been extremely helpful, in-kind donations with the roller dumpsters.
Dumpsters and the staff helping us with the electrical hook up.
Yes. Is there anyone else you'd like to acknowledge that I perhaps missed?
I will acknowledge them because I have a presentation, and my staff has been really outstanding. We have Richard Alderman, he's the senior director, and he oversees the architectural function, and he's also a building official. I have Rodney here, who is over construction services. We have Rory out in the field right now over maintenance services. I have Pam out there, Lou's working on the portables, and Doug's staff has been on all campus helping us a lot. So, my, the leadership in our facilities and operation, they have been quite outstanding, and I'm proud of all staff members.
Absolutely.
For accomplishing so much in such a little time with little resources.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you sharing that. And I had shared that with Angela. I was absolutely impressed with our team, our folks, and all those in the community that helped us. Also, I wanted to just make note that we feel very blessed that there was no loss of life and, but we're also very empathetic in understanding that a lot of our students and their families lost their homes. We have students that lost homes. We have students and families that had severe damage to their homes. So, we're thankful. I know that community well, and they will rally together and support one another, and we know that Polk County will do the same, and so we'll continue to reach out to our community.
So, where is what we're spending immediately coming from? Like, what's the, what's the, is it, are we pulling that out of sales tax fund?
I believe you could ask Mr. Pitts, but I think it's sales tax, basically, whatever we're doing there.
There's not really a concern, I mean, there's really not a concern about what we're immediately sending. The insurance company will reimburse us.
Okay.
So, we will use a temporary fund until we get that reimbursement. That's how we normally handle these sort of things. But we can use L-Sax, we can use L-CI. There are several capital funds that we had to, to really spend for a long period of time.
Okay. But there's not any sort of emergency liquidity crisis or anything like that in dealing with this?
No.
Okay. Okay. Do we, do we have some, I think, I was, I think I flew out of town the night this happened and just got back in like at 2:00 AM last, last night, so forgive me. But the, do we have sort of a point person for coordinating what people in the area want to do in terms of donations or, like, I think there's, how are we organizing that?
For donations or for, our point person on campus is our service manager, David Cannell. So, everything goes through him. For donations, I don't know.
I'm talking more about fundraising.
Yeah, that would be Ms. Pleasant.
We published that information on our Facebook yesterday. P-A and P-E have both had official drop-off locations for items, and we published the instructions for the monetary donations. I can send it to you.
Let me just add one more thing, and I'm sorry. We're trying to assess actually what our actual needs are. By the end of today, I'm going to meet with public relations staff, we'll be able to direct community groups and that sort of thing to actually what our needs are before, we're asking today, and to hold off before we can just let them know what our needs are with us.
Yes.
If that, if that makes sense. We're getting, we're getting folks that want to donate money and all of this, so we are going to get another list of information out later today after what we've already received. If that makes sense to you, if that helps.
Right.
Does that make sense?
What we've done with Polk Education Foundation is they are going to take care of if there's any monetary or gift card donations, because they have a way to set that up where we don't.
Right.
We are taking physical, just basic supplies right now until we got a list of more specific things that, like, teachers' personal items that are, you know, going to be replaced or maybe uncovered under insurance. Because I also have all of my state counterparts around the state want to help, and so they were waiting for more specific. But we're taking these basic supplies right now.
Well, I guess, I mean, there are a lot of ways to raise money independently online these days, and I'm sure some of that's going, going on now, and just wanted to make sure, like, that we have a way to channel that where it needs to go. Is that, so is that what P-EF is sort of, like, we don't, we don't, we don't want to say people don't donate money until we know exactly where it's going to go. We want to put it in a secure place, so it's going to go to recovery.
We have taken all the monetary donations.
Polk Education Foundation.
Okay. So, if a group has done their own thing, they can transfer it to P-EF?
Yes, that's correct.
And if they drop off money in our office, we are taking it over to the foundation.
Okay.
So, we've had people drop off money, and we've been taking it immediately.
We greatly appreciate that collaboration and the outpouring of support from our community, and it's been, it's been remarkable and amazing, but I'm not surprised because we, we know our community and how much they care for one another. So, I also wanted to mention to you Oscar J. Pope. We're coming along there. If you don't know, we had a building there that the roof imploded, and we had Pat Barnes, Dr. Aggs on-site yesterday, along with our team from facilities, and I believe that project is moving forward, correct, Ms. Sash?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Is that part of the same storm or independent?
Same storm.
Okay. I can't, I'm not sure. I would have to, I would have-
Mr. Porter, did you need an assessment? And he said it's a lot of factors.
Multiple factors, okay.
Mr. Hill, I have a question. For the students who have been impacted by loss of home, like our social workers, have we identified how many students? I don't know, are we doing anything on that side?
Not, we have not identified that I'm aware of, but I know Ms. Bird did make sure that we have, we're going to have our teams out to make sure that we're taking care of their social emotional behavior, or not social emotional behaviors, I'm sorry, their social emotional needs. And so, we'll have our crisis teams members available. And I think our guidance department will probably be the ones to help identify our students and then find ways to support them. Yes, ma'am.
Have our crisis teams been at any of the other surrounding schools, Kathleen High School, where the students that live in those areas are attending school?
We have staff at Parkview Elementary specifically.
Okay.
And then the other schools were notified as well to be on guard. We start with the school-based staff members first, and then kind of branch out from there. We need to add additional, district-wide team members.
Yeah. And if there's no other questions, just to wrap up, I think it, we also want to commend Kathleen High School for opening up, you know, their school to the community this past weekend, and they did receive a number of donations from the community to support our students and our families. And so, they'll be working to make sure those in need receive that kind of, that support. All right. So, any other questions regarding that? All right. I'm going to move forward to item two, our ongoing legislative discussion. And I believe, Mr. Wilson, this is something that you wanted on there for continuation.
Well, I think some of the board members had asked that we bring this back, and so I would open it up with comments from board members. Any questions, comments?
Two things. I mean, I think we should probably pull it out and just put it on the agenda, the regular agenda tonight rather than consent, because it might be out of, have it as an individual vote. It's on, it's on consent, no.
Okay. So, we're going to pull that, so when we get, we'll go over the agenda in a few minutes, and then we'll just pull it from the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda?
Right.
If I'm understanding you correctly.
Correct. But I do have, like, one specific, I mean, I'm generally okay with the document with one specific change, which is, there's a, the way it refers to VAM. I actually sent a bunch, a bunch of revisions, but, but the one I most am focused on, I think, I think you have to go to the actual meeting to get it off the consent to see where the-
Okay. I'm looking at it.
Yeah. It still refers only to the VAM as a, the timing of it, that VAM be calculated by the state by July 31st, or whatever date. I think it's important for us to say, the state should not use VAM in the distribution of personnel or, you know, whatever. Should, should not be, VAM should not be used to make personnel decisions. And then, and if it is, require the state calculated by X day. So, like, I would add a sentence on two, just keep two, add a sentence that says, VAM should not be used by the state for personnel decisions. Period. And then, and then you can add, if it is, comma, require state calculated VAM score. Do you guys follow what I'm saying there?
Well, I follow, but I'm, I would want, before we make that change, I would want the superintendent's input, and I know that you feel very strongly about that, but without her input, I would be reluctant to, to change that at this time. It doesn't mean we can't look at that moving forward. Any thoughts by my colleagues on the board? Yes, ma'am.
Personally, I would like to leave it as, with the changes that we made last time and look to, if any, the continued discussion for legislative platform, I think, should be moving forward for continued legislative discussions. I think that we do need to make that, we made the ask a couple of years ago, get rid of VAM, and this is what they gave us. So, it concerns me not to ask for very specific things because if we ask, just get rid of it, then they tend to not always.
Wait a minute. Did you just say it concerns you to ask or not ask for specific things?
It concerns me to not ask for more specific things.
Okay, yeah.
Because I think asking for specific things that is more easily comprehensible, that they can take little bites at the apple.
Nobody here hates VAM more than Sarah Portman, period. But I just have to kind of, you know, it's not really the state legislature that puts this punishment on us, it's the DOE, and we have no control over them per se. Do we?
Only through the political.
If you see what I'm saying, though, like, and this is our legislative priority, and I believe our legislators already said pretty much, you know, is my only point.
Mr. Wilson, I believe Dr. Aggs and Francis.
Just working on a lot of situations, which you'll see in, with the DOE, is that when there lacks clarity on exactly how to implement something, the next time the legislative session comes around, then it'll be more specificity. So, that's, a lot of times, a lot of legislation sometimes gets a little bit deeper in the weeds than what it should. But yes, the legislation can be changed to where this will not happen again, absolutely could be.
And so, could we pull that from the consent agenda, please? We, we will talk about it some more when we get to that part of the agenda, but I just want to give you plenty of time to work on that. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment as well. After reviewing all that's been sent to us, I kind of feel that this probably warrants some discussion to go forward, but I don't know that now is the time. Had we started this process a little while back and had maybe more time, so I think going forward, but I just think it ought to be left the way it is for this year so that we can move on, have our platform and its alignment with the other organizations, and then, as we move into next year and we prepare, then I think we need to have this discussion perhaps a little earlier on and see what the legislative session looks like, quite frankly. I mean, I think there may be some things moving forward in that vein that maybe we're not apprised of yet because of timing. So, so I'd support it the way it was presented to us with the changes that Ms. Dodge made after our meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, how it's currently, yes, on our agenda. That is correct.
Ms. Fields?
I would agree with Ms. Cunningham. I think that the legislators have already started meeting, if I'm correct, and Ms. Dodge needs to have something that she can be working on at this point in time. And I think that if we want to make some changes, it needs to be for the next year but not for this current year.
Ms. Thompson?
I think "do not use VAM in personnel decisions" is pretty specific. I'm not sure where the lack of specificity is in that. This reads now as an endorsement of VAM. It absolutely does. I'm not going to endorse VAM. I'm not going to endorse, endorse its use. I think anybody who thinks July 31st is going to be any less disruptive than August 8th is fooling themselves. Like, a week isn't going to make a difference. It's going to be just as disruptive, just, just as chaotic. You know, I, so, I don't think it's very hard, and I'm not sure what it hurts, to say, "Do not use state calculated VAM in personnel decisions." And if you do, make sure you have the VAM calculated by July 31st. I mean, we, we had "don't use VAM in personnel decisions" before. The state could very easily, our legislature could very easily interpret our taking that away now as endorsing it. Hey, two, two years, two years, two years ago, y'all, y'all were against VAM. Now you don't say anything about it. Now it's just the timing that bothers you. I've dealt with them enough to know you have to be very, 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 very clear. I'm going to be very clear. VAM is damaging to our teachers, our kids, our schools. It's not, it was a bad idea in its well-executed form five, six, seven, eight years ago out there in the rest of the world. Even those people who first created it didn't envision it being used like this. No one thinks this is a good use for it. It's a terrible idea on its face. This is taking the idea and multiplying it by 10. I'm not going to endorse that. It reads as an endorsement of VAM right now. It just does, and that's, I guess, sort of my stance on it.
Ms. Ward?
Well, I would think how it reads is an opinion, but, you know, because it requires state calculated VAM. I mean, it is required of us. Is that not right, Tedra?
It is correct.
Right. So, if we could, the only thing I'd be willing to do is move the date up to give you more time.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah. Yes.
I know.
Because they're going to, they're going to use it. I mean, I don't know. I see both sides.
Ms. Miller?
As a new board member, can you tell me when, was it last legislative session or two legislative sessions ago that we had the statement of getting rid of VAM?
Two years ago.
No, 2019, it's right here.
So, it was the last one that we did?
I'm pretty sure.
Prohibiting the use of VAM only?
This is my copy, though, with my writing, so I don't, I can't find the final. I can't find my final. I looked last night, and I couldn't find it, so here we are.
So, in 2019, we asked number five prohibit the use of VAM-only scores by the FDOE in teacher placement decisions, HB 401. So, there was a House bill to do that that failed.
Correct.
Is that, is there a House bill, is there a discussion of that bill coming back?
I don't know. That would be a question for Ms. Dodge, I think.
Yeah, and that always comes out here. Right, right, it's got to. But I'm not sure if that was the final, because I don't have the final.
Well, it's not written draft, so I'm assuming it is final, usually a stamp draft.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know.
As far as the, our FBSA legislative call last, this past Friday, it was not one of the ones mentioned that has been filed to come back.
Just so you know.
Okay. But you don't, but you don't not, I mean, there are lots of things they don't do, like providing money, for instance, and yet we call for money all the time. Like, the fact that they're not going to do some, something most likely is the best reason to call for them to do it. They will say, "You're satisfied." They, they will look at this and say, "Tea, you, what do you, what do you, what do you mean?" Like, "We did, we did what you, what you asked, we did it by, by, by July 31st." That's, that's what they're going to do. That's what they do all the time. I don't, I really don't see why this is controver, urcile. I mean, sometimes you lose in your priorities, but clarity is important, and, I mean, that's-
Well, my biggest concern is Superintendent Bird isn't here to give her input on this one.
Through our Matt, too.
You know, I'm sure she would agree, but it, that it's harmful. I mean, you'd have to be-
Well, there appear to be some-
On a different planet not to think it was harmful.
Differences of opinion on this. So, it's clearly an ongoing discussion, and so, Ms. Winchester, if you could, if you wouldn't mind letting the superintendent know that we'd like to continue with this item as an agenda item, would you do that, please? Thank you. And we will continue to discuss it moving forward.
Why don't, why don't, why don't we strike the VAM? I mean, I mean, if, if y'all want to get this out tonight, strike the VAM part from it and follow up with it on, I mean, because at least then you're not endorsing it, which is what we're doing now. Make no mistake, we're endorsing it with this. We're, we're saying, "Please just don't do it so late as you did it this year." It's an endorsement. They're going to take it as that.
Ms. Fields?
I agree with Ms. Portman. Superintendent Bird is not here, nor is Ms. Dodge. I think that we need to be fair as it is with the adjustments that were made and then have further discussion. I also think that when we have discussion, we need to hear from staff on how VAM and SAO are intertwined.
Yeah, that's, I found it.
Dr. Aggs. I think that's going to be very important for everybody to understand that as well.
Ms. Reynolds?
I want to go on the record first of saying that I am not endorsing VAM, but I do think that we should take a vote tonight to, to vote for this in the current state so that Ms. Dodge can begin to use it.
Well, to be clear, it's not, it's not being pulled from tonight's agenda. I want to make that clear. We're just moving it from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for discussion purposes.
Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yeah, I did find it in our 2019 legislative priorities. The fifth thing down is prohibit the use of VAM-only scores by FDOE in teacher placement decisions. So, it's not exactly what you're saying. House Bill 401, 2018 session.
I'm happy to use the phrase "teacher placement decisions" because it's not being used in anything else.
Right. So, so we probably need to-
It is being used in other places.
Not, not here.
So, we actually use VAM in teacher evaluations as a section. It's called the student data, essentially. So, we use it there. If the teacher is teaching in a course that generates a VAM, we use it there, and then that affects their overall evaluation, which then if we give raises, let's say a teacher's overall evaluation may be effective, rather than highly effective, that VAM score will be calculated into that.
So, where do SAOs come in? My understanding that SAOs specifically replace VAM?
The teacher, if the teacher has the option to opt-in on the SAOPs, and the majority of the teachers who would be receiving the VAM would opt-in. They still carry the VAM number with them that could be negatively affecting, like you talked about the placement of the term around schools. The teachers now have the opportunity to actually opt-in to the SAOPs if it's a, whether they teach an FSA course that has a VAM with it or any other teacher. And the mass majority, probably 90, 95% of our teachers all went with the SAO issue.
So, so, so VAM in terms of local evaluation is voluntary? It's a, it's a voluntary thing for the, for the teacher, correct?
For them to, for it to be used in their evaluation, yes.
And it is, that's the state calculated VAM, right? Not something we do as well?
Everything is state calculated.
Well, we used to have a home one that we got rid of, but, okay. So, so maybe the-
It's also used to determine bonuses as well, so the bonus structures that are coming down from the state, it's also used to determine that. So, a highly effective teacher, that email that I sent out- So a highly effective teacher, that email that I sent out, I think that Mrs. Miller referenced. But that email said that essentially a highly effective teacher can receive up to $21,000. And that was all based on their state VAM data.
Right, well, that's bad too. So maybe the way to do this then, Wes, can I have a question? So this comes up for a vote tonight. I say add whatever that language, I can choose to amend it to say whatever.
You can make a motion to amend. And if, if it draws a second, there will be a vote.
Okay.
If it does not draw a second, then the motion fails and the original motion would proceed.
That's probably the, you, you just wait it to.
Did it work last year?
No. No.
Ms. Miller?
I think this under. It's been the past two years.
Two years, but I only have this last year's with me.
Uh, Ms. Miller, you had a, you had a comment?
Yeah, this underlines the fact that this cannot be brought to us a meeting before it is going to be on our agenda.
That's correct.
Because you can read both sides of it. If we've asked for it twice, they're going to, one can read this and say, well, they've given up with it going away as long as we get it to them by July 31st. I completely understand that. On the other side, now you're in a time crunch where we have people that aren't even here. Well, we didn't expect a natural disaster, but we have people that aren't here to be able to give input on, and we're running to vote for something that we did not have enough time on. So that, you know, that's where I'm at with, yes, I understand the legislative process and how this needs to get started. This was not a place that a board member should be put into, trying to create this at the last minute without good conversation. Repeating something that we've had for two years in a row that we've taken out while including something that directly affects more of South Florida than it does us right here with the impact studies to the hazardous walking conditions. Not that we don't have them, but that is a huge issue for South Florida. And so we're accommodating them on one side, which I appreciate. The collaboration, I just, we need more time on this. And if we add it to the agenda every time, I would like someone here that can talk about updates, either by phone or printed report on where we are with the, with the platform.
Yes, thank you. So going back to our last meeting and work session, one of the discussions we had was making sure we got something to Ms. Dodge in a timely manner, so she, because they're there now. They're talking about these things. So my, my question to you, Mr. Bridges, is, if we pass this in its current form, can we, can we amend this at a later meeting?
I don't think there is anything that would prohibit you from doing that. This is your platform. Whatever you adopt, you can change. As a practical matter, if, if it has been disseminated in one form and you later disseminated in another form, it, it may or may not have the impact you wish for it to have. But it is yours. There's nothing in the law that, that says you have to do it at all or gives you a deadline to do it. It is something that you use as a tool to, to, to focus the tip of the spear, if you will. But yes, you can do that.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit reluctant to, to make those changes without hearing from the superintendent. And I, but I, you know, I, I see no reason why we couldn't amend it in the future if we wanted to do so.
Dr. Aitchison, were you wanting to answer my question?
What question, Ms. Wardy?
The one about, uh, did it work the last? Two times? I, I thought I saw you wanting to answer me really bad.
I think we've out, I mean, I think as a group, we've advocated to lessen the impact, the negative impact VAM can have on classroom future. And I would say because we now have the ability to have a teacher opt in for something other than the VAM to be used, I think we have made, for the teacher itself, I think we've gained ground with that. But I agree that, you know, it has a very negative effect on a turnaround school. You've got to go move teachers around.
Yes. Which leads me to my second question, which is to. Ms. Porteous, if you had an ideal date, what would that be? To have your VAM scam scores delivered to you?
June 30th.
June 30th?
And the reason why.
I think that's what we need to be asking.
And if I may just.
Yes, ma'am.
Continue. The reason why is because it really does take a lot to, one, find a placement for the teacher, and then, two, make sure that they're happy. So they're already unhappy because we have to move them, because we've delivered the bad news to them about their VAM, because they're confused about the differences between SAO and VAM. And so then having that conversation and then saying, okay, now we're moving you from Philip O'Brien to, um, Auburndale. Go to Auburndale. And then having them have that time to assimilate, because it's a different environment. Not only do I have to know the principal now, but I'm kind of going in with some sort of stigma. And I need to learn the, my colleagues as well. And I need to learn my, my students. And so a week, quite frankly, is still a shortened time. Because if we do July 31st, typically we start teachers on, or the first teacher contract date is August 5th. So that only gives them five days to really assimilate to their students. And it's better than nothing, because right now they're only giving them two days.
Exactly.
Right.
I, I, I'm hearing you. So would anybody like to discuss the 30th? Could we do that?
Is it realistic?
Is it?
Would that be realistic to put in here?
I'm not sure when.
What the, yeah, what's the order of providing?
Surely major computers, they can.
Well, it seemed to have, had difficulty getting the.
And that's in legislation. Then they have to actually do a process. And I'm not sure how long that process takes or how. So I don't know, but I would have to agree with Ms. Porteous on the timeline.
Ms. Reynolds?
I was just going to ask, when, when is it that our state scores have to come in? Is it June 30th as well?
It's about the end of June.
Yes.
So it would align it with that, and that information is.
Would make sense.
They have it. It's just how quickly they calculate it.
Ms. Fields?
How about the other one, to alter the date from July 31st to June 30th? If this is realistic.
So we have, we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'll move, move the date back as early as you. I'm kind of indifferent to what the state considers real, real, realistic, but move it back as far as you guys want.
Okay, sure.
This was the bigger point for Ms. Porteous. I would argue that political pressure from the board level has been more successful in, in reducing the effect of VAM than just about any other policy we've talked about. I mean, they ignored us much more on money, on, on, on other things, you know. I, I think, I think, like, the, the, they didn't even talk, talk to us about security rules. I mean, I think in some, in some way, the rebellion against VAM that's been ongoing for a time has been pretty success, successful. And the attention that was generated after this most, most recent abomination has been helpful as well. I, I think it's much harder for anybody to defend it now. And they're looking for us not, not to give them a hard time about it, so they don't have to, to, you know, so they don't have to, they don't want to defend it. Make them defend it.
Just briefly?
Yes, please.
So, that's my point, Mr. Townsend. It's exactly what you said. They are aware. So let's make it to where it is up to them to get us that punishment as soon as possible. You know, they're going to, they're going to deal out the punishment. And the state legislature can control the date that punishment happens.
But the state.
Does that make sense?
But they can also control the punishment itself. And, and if they don't.
They've already tried.
No, they, they passed a law two, 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 two years ago. They could pass another one that says, take it back. I mean, even, it's, I mean, you know, it's, it's a, it's a political question and, and, you know, I'm.
I get it, but.
Ms. Reynolds?
I just, Laura pointed out on this, this, these are legislative priorities for this year. I think that in addition, I know we have talked about this before, that we should have a platform of, these are what our core beliefs are as Polk County School Board. And that's something that we should look at developing this spring. We don't support VAM. We don't, these are the things that we believe at our core. But I think these need to be our priorities of things that we want to happen in this session. And that are, at least within a shy chance of possibility. That I think asking for things that they've told us they're not going to happen is, you know, we need, we need to be asking for very specific things that, that are achievable.
I would, even if we do not touch it, as soon as I talk to, to my people that represent me, I'm going to say we really need it by June 30th. That's going to come out of my mouth, whether it's written here or not written here. We can change that.
Yeah, we can change that.
We can, and vote on it. You could also say, I would like to see VAM better.
Pretty easy. I'll, I'll just make an amendment tonight that uses that, that, that language, vote up or down, and we'll, and we'll go, we'll go from there.
Yeah, but, Ms. Miller?
I just, talking about position statements, this is where we need to tell our story to the public of how this is hurting people other than the people that live in education world, because they need to be pushing it from the outside. When you explain this to someone, when you explain what happens to a teacher who is teaching low socioeconomic, kids with disabilities, who are not on the same playing field, and they get these scores that negatively impact their income, no one thinks it's a good idea. So this is a collab, this is a bigger effort, this is a joint effort to create, if we're creating something separately with our positions, that there's a campaign with that, that we're not just telling people how great our schools are, but we're telling them what hurts us by these legislative actions. Because just us saying it does not matter. And so if we're going to create a separate legislative position statement, it needs to come with a campaign to the public of why VAM hurts, not just saying it does. Because people don't even know what that stands for outside of education world. And so that's my only input if we're going to do something separate than that. I totally get trying to get things done on that legislative platform. I am still concerned that these dates are, everything is pushed on us at the last minute to decide on. Session starts in January. They are in committee meetings. I don't know that there's a huge rush, but if Wendy says she needs it, I know that we need to get her something. But to leave it, you know, it, I just think that needs to be a follow-through with it, not just saying, yeah, nobody's with VAM. Everybody knows VAM hurts. That doesn't.
And so let me, here's what I'm hearing from the board. I'm hearing that we're in agreement with Mr. Townsend's argument that VAM is a bad thing. We want to do a bigger campaign than just put something in writing.
You will get more from a campaign against VAM.
Or at least a, a different approach, as Ms. Reynolds suggested. But for tonight, we have, this is, this is going to stay on the agenda for this evening. We, what I'm hearing is that we have agreement with staff. Mr. Hill, would you agree to moving that to June 30th?
Yes.
Okay. And so I think we have agreement with the board and staff to do that. Do we want to change that, Mr. Bridges, before we go to the meeting, or do we want an amendment at the meeting?
I, I think you could do it either way.
Okay.
You can ask for it to be changed when it gets there. And then at the beginning of the meeting, the, it would simply be read in as a revision.
Yeah, well, nobody's voted on it yet.
Right. But, but I'm asking that.
Revision to the published agenda.
I'm asking that from a procedural perspective, given that Mr. Townsend also has a change he'd like to make, so.
Right. So if, if there's an agreed change that will be made prior to the meeting, you can go ahead and do that. Then, then Mr. Townsend can make his motion to amend the agenda, add his piece of which would be voted up or down.
Okay. But I would like to see, if we're all in agreement, all seven sitting here, that we should change it from July 31st to June 30th, then who procedurally, is that you, Ms. Winchester, who would take care of this?
Well, I think what, what, Mr. Bridges is saying is that. Is that Mr. Hill would read it in, would read a revision into the record, is that correct?
Yeah, at, at the beginning of the meeting, when they're, when, when the question was asked, are there any revisions to the agenda? That would be, that would be read. Whoever, whoever, whoever has access to that item can make the change to that item before the meeting. But it will be read into the record as a revision.
Okay.
So it will be recorded.
So I, I would like a new typed up one that says June 30th. Who, and I understand that Wendy's not here. I get that. But is there someone in her department or somebody that supports, that could get this done for us?
I think it's just her department.
I know, I understand, I understand.
She, she currently is a. We could, we could see if we can get the electronic document.
There you go. Okay, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay. Because I'd like to have that attached properly, you know what I'm saying, to the agenda.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just want to ask one question of PR and Rachel. I'm sorry. You made these last year that were so helpful in being able to pass them out, particularly at our Leadership Lakeland, Leadership Winter Haven. Are you planning to do these again? Okay.
Yeah.
And if we could each get a stack as soon as they're ready, so that we can pass them out in the communities.
With our mission and vision in it?
With, maybe could we add our mission and vision to them?
Sure.
Good point.
Awesome.
Okay.
Good point, Ms. Courtney.
Anytime.
Mr. Hill?
All right. Discussion item number three. Update on capital projects. Ms. Asher, if you and your team, please come forth.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The purpose of being here is just to update the board on the capital projects we're currently working on. We bring them here as agenda item for you all to approve, but I just wanted to do you all to see where we are. The first one being Davenport Elementary. Which one of these again is there? Which one of them is the slideshow? Anyway. We're keeping Building One, which is the oldest building. And we are kind of restoring it, and I'll get some more into that. Come get me the slide sorter. Is this one? No, that's the slide sorter. Okay, good. All right. So, and the campus will be converted, as you all know, into a full elementary school, 829 student capacity. It's located in the downtown Davenport area. We have worked really successfully with the city. The city abandoned a portion of Swanee for us. The mayor and the city council are very supportive of it. Richard, if you want to talk more about the architect. The architect is Fern Wyngman from Lakeland.
Yeah, they've, they've worked on this. They're, they're working with structural engineers and all to get the, the, the Building One restored. We're bringing back the auditorium, the stage, and the balcony. And we're doing a new classroom building, which has pre-K kindergarten, a new cafeteria building. We're remodeling two of the classroom buildings on campus. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. This is the site plan. This is Palmetto up here. And so the entrance will still be on Palmetto. Building One will remain. This will be the pre-K pickup. This will be the bus drop-off, parent pickup. We have 105 parking spaces on site. What we're trying to do here, and Richard, you could add to it, is to try to capture the old building architectural features, even on a one-story building. This is a new building, and we're trying to do the classical revival to replicate or to what's on the, on Building One. And so. Rodney, talk more about construction, the product.
For Davenport. Davenport's, well, construction is well underway. They're, they're working on all the building pads.
No, no, please, please continue. I'm sorry.
They're working on all the building pads. We're on schedule right now to open August of 20.
So construction has already started. We have some pictures.
Is that a metal roof?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh.
This is the old auditorium that we are, this is wooden floors that we're stripping and redoing. We still have the stage. We even have a little orchestra pit that we're keeping. So some historic features that will remain. As Rodney said, opening in 2020 costs $35 million. So that's Davenport.
How does, I'm just curious, because I have many friends and supporters in Davenport, and they are thrilled. Like, it's the only positive messages I get on this thing right here. But how, how does that compare if we had to tear it all down and build up a new one, like, money-wise?
It's not a big difference.
I didn't think so.
It's not a big difference.
And then we get to.
And because, and keep some of the historic features.
Just like Kathleen Middle School was very concerned about keeping theirs. Communities matter. People matter. That's right. Relationships matter.
All right. Now we'll go to the. I can't see, you know. Let's do AAA first. That's it, okay. AAA, this is a new high school off of Highway 547. That's it. Country Road 547, next to the Davenport School of the Arts. Just show me what you, what you do.
That's his, that's his expertise.
Sorry?
It's his expertise.
That's his function, right?
That's your function, Dr. Aitchison.
The school is, we still plan to open it in August 2021. The site has been really chal- challenging. We have a number of environmental issues, skinks, gopher turduses, wetlands. We, it's just a lot of long lead environmental issues, where we have to go through the permitting process. We're hoping to start construction the end of November, the beginning of December, and we're planning a groundbreaking for November 20th. And I'll send out a calendar invite. I mentioned where it is already. The good thing about this, we saw the school in, was it past Hernando County, and we liked it because of the compactness. And it's mainly just two buildings. Richard, you want to add to it?
Well, basically, you got a front building, which is admin on the first floor, with three-story classrooms, wings on either end, and the media centers on the center on the second floor. The back building, you have a jam cafeteria, performing arts, theater, and then various outbuildings for athletics.
We'll have a lot of parking, 850 more than required by even the local government, more than what's required by SRAF. We'll have space for cars to stack 225, and if they double up, we'll get stacked 325. And we have outside stacking for 60 buses. What we're doing here is bringing the traffic, the bus loop for the middle school off the same, to get them off the roadway. And the county has agreed to pay for the traffic signal here, as their contribution.
That's a great.
I have a question. When you mentioned sand skinks, did we have to buy credits for that?
Yes, we do.
Do you know how much we're buying?
Did we get the phone number? I don't remember. We have our environmental, our report now.
It was a lot.
Yeah, okay.
I can't remember the $8 amount, but it was a lot.
That's the business to be in.
Yeah.
By the pound.
Skinks by the pound, yeah.
We should make the mascot the sand skinks.
It should be the skinks.
Should we talk about this already?
Would you want to go there?
Yeah.
Would you want to go to high school?
Yeah, that'd be awesome. That would skink.
Skink.
Heck, yeah.
Sorry. It's very expensive to buy a credit, so I was just curious if we had to-
You wouldn't have to worry about it.
Not just the skinks, the gopher tortoise, too, and wetland mitigation.
Right.
It could be the gopher tortoise.
Maybe go to tortoise.
Yeah. With all those things going on, you really feel like we're still going to open in 2021?
That's what I've been holding everybody to.
Have you really?
Yes.
I just assumed when we were so delayed, it wasn't going to happen.
We have been having quite a number of meetings with the construction management company, Wharton Smith. And yes, we're still-
On target.
-trying to get to that deadline. We're starting later than we had anticipated, but we're hoping that because they built the school before, it'll not be that challenging for them.
That challenging. Okay, thank you.
And, Sasha, where, where are the portables going to go?
No portable.
Okay, all right.
You have to bag it up, Ms. Ford, name.
Yeah, I know.
Certainly, the school will have the performance art, the fine arts, hospitality, hotel management, technology, marketing, and gaming. Just, these are not necessarily what it will look like, but it'll have the full auditorium, 850 seats, the gymnasium, some other site amenities that I talked about, that we'll have. And Wharton Smith is the construction managers, and Rodney.
They are, as Ms. Sasha said, were scheduled to have a ton of groundbreaking November the 20th, and they plan on starting construction December the 8th, being complete of August 21.
That's correct.
What time's the groundbreaking? Or do you not have that figured out?
I have to work that over public relations, but it'll be in the morning.
It'll be an AM thing? Okay, thank you.
And we got different architectural rendering, and I think there's a little modification to this one, but it'll look more or less like this. Okay. And the third one is Mulberry High School. Let me see if I can do this myself, slideshow. And play from where?
Beginning.
All the way to left.
I don't see. Okay, all right. You see how it takes? I got it.
So proud of you, ma'am.
Okay. Mulberry High School, and I'm glad this one is really on schedule. We're going well with this, because it's, the site is a built site. We don't have all the environmental issues. However, we do have some land issues that we had to address. The total square footage, these are the electives. It'll be three floors with auditorium, music, classroom buildings, with some of them to remain. And the total capacity, we're increasing it from like 1,300 to 1,600. Now, this is the floor plan, and Richard, you, can you see out of it if you can, but I could help you with that.
At the top left would be the, the gymnasium with the girls', boys', locker rooms. And to the left of that, you'll have vocational, like auto mechanics and all. And then you got the kitchen for the dining, and the white space below that is the dining area, actual dining area. Down below, in the base to the left, is the media center, which opens out onto the dining floor. The blue is the admin wing. And then to the left, you've got general classrooms, EAC, and science labs.
Right. And we have the, an outdoor dining here also.
There's outdoor dining.
Okay. This project will be developed in phases, and Rodney and Richard, if you want to come in. The first phase is, because we'll build the, the new building here, we'll have to move the baseball, right, over here. We'll build a new baseball there. Then the second phase will start with the construction of the building here, with, with this area, and parking. The third phase will continue with that, and we'll do, finalize the parking, and do the additional parking here. And the fourth phase, the project will be done, and we'll start tearing down the existing school. Go through the milestones, Rodney, please.
Okay. Well, like you said, we're going to be building the new building on top of the existing baseballs. They're making arrangements to have athletics on another, at another facility, at least, maybe at the county facility and some other schools, because they've got that worked out. Once we, once we complete the new high school, the kids will move into the new high school, which will leave the existing facilities vacant, and we'll be able to tear down the existing facilities, and then start cleaning up and getting ready. We hope to have this completed by August of 21. And we may roll over into 22 for the demo portion, to where we're having to clear the side of the BAN ROTC area on top of the hill where the school's at now. And so, I would say, January of 22 will be totally complete.
But they can occupy the school in August 21, because they're, that will be done by June 2021. The last phase that Rodney referred to was tearing down the old building, but the students can occupy 2021.
You said you had some land issues?
Right. It's just to make sure that, it was more the foundation. We just, we did some different analysis, just to make sure that everything, that we checked everything, and everything came out okay. And we're designing based on that soil type. Right?
Right.
So, it might, we, I think we had to put a little bit more into the foundation plan based on the soil, but everything is working out.
We just received documents from the architect, which our final review documents. We'll be reviewing those, and we hope to put this on the street, and it'll almost follow just behind, or at the same time, AAA is going on.
Right. I think it's, I think it's, okay. $5 million, opening in August 2021. All right. Now, we have other projects coming up. Oh, that's AAA again, sorry.
Before you go to the next slide, I think you might be saying, who's the architect?
For Mulberry, Ziskovich. Ziskovich.
Okay, and then who's going on the construction?
Wharton. Oh, no, Rada. Rada is the- We're also doing East Side, and the architect is Parlier, right, on this? And it's the new cafeteria at East Side. The drawing, the, the colors will match the existing campus. So, we're just trying to pick up some of the architectural features. And this is a 6.8 million, I think, for this project, for East Side.
Yes, yes, just around there.
Yeah, 6.5. And that's coming from sales tax. Then the other building we have going is the gym, the gym at Westwood Middle, and that is 4.3 million from sales tax. This is one of five gyms that we'll be doing. The next one will be Dennison, Lake Gibson, Lakeland Highland, Borto, and then McLaughlin. And the architect, sorry.
But Westwood's a complete, you're not remodeling a gym.
No, it's brand new.
It's brand new, different than the others that are remodeled.
This is brand new.
Oh, no. Borto doesn't have a gym.
Borton doesn't have a gym.
All the other, all the other ones, unless it are new gyms.
They don't have a gym.
They don't have gyms.
Okay. That's true, because Lake Gibson was Sherry.
No, because I could, like, softball at Dennison, like, outside. There is no gym.
And the architect is for Ben Monday, and the builder is? And who's building East Side again? I get them all confused. Core. Core is building East Side.
Core Construction, yeah.
Yeah, Core Construction. We have several other major projects, like we have going on right now, $3.8 million in HVAC right now in our project list. We put in projects, AC, Five Kitchens, Carousel, Garden Grove, Rochelle, Hope City, and we have a whole list of projects over the five years for AC that we have to complete. You know, we have been doing the intercom and fire upgrade, and for this, we have quite a lot of money. I think, right now, we have like $14 million in for intercom and fire upgrade, that we're trying to get done at all schools. Single point of entry, we started with 32, we're down to 10. We have 10 more schools to do single point of entry with. And other projects, we're replacing playgrounds, addressing ADA problems, we're doing parking lots, roof replacement, window replacement, athletics, and we're doing a big project, the fueling station at Lake Will's Support Services. These are only some of the projects I wanted to highlight, but we, we have quite a number more than these.
On the single point of entry, you said we only have 10 to go. Does that mean 10 schools out of 150?
150. That's correct, to create the single point.
We only have 10 more to go.
That's correct.
When do you anticipate? Yeah, that's amazing. When do you anticipate?
They're all, they, they all have the contract already.
Roughly, okay.
So, the contractors, they're, it took a while, because we had to get drawings, and then hire the contractors.
Sure.
And we divided it between all three contractors and continuing contracts. So-
So, seven of the 10 are out to bid right now.
Wow.
And we're expecting a GMP for those in November.
Yes, sir.
And then they can get started on those seven, and that will leave three. And there's, those three had a couple little design issues, and we'll be working on those last three, and that should take care of all of them.
Certain, okay. Perfect.
Okay, before, okay, sorry.
I had a question back. I know that you obviously have ADA walkthroughs, but when you're looking at new construction of these new schools, universal design, sometimes we see in the newest construction, we have some, we have problems sometimes in science labs and other places where ADA, it really doesn't cover, but the kids have hard time accessing. So, who, who in our district is over?
We are. Richard is the building official, but with the lab for making sure that their design for ADA accessibility. But that's something that we look at when we review the drawings from the architect. Make sure this.
I'm surprised how many buildings we have to go back in to make sure in the city, because they're not ADA accessible, because I don't know how they pass. But sometimes things can come in under ADA, but they're still not accessible to all.
So, as an example, if you were to look at the new project that we did at Borto, half of the science labs are ADA accessible and the other half, so it's half and half.
Right.
So.
They have the different tables.
And that is really, that was like the first thing I noticed. I was like, oh, that's awesome.
I know in our, some of our playgrounds and playground equipment, are we making sure those are accessible when they're building these elementary schools? Because we have schools now that do not have accessible playgrounds.
They are.
Okay. Okay. The architect provided me with this for Mulberry, so I just wanted to play it. It has no sound. It's just a fly through.
Mr. Hill is saying for us.
He dances, he does.
Don't we have radon detectors at Mulberry High School right now?
I don't recall. I'll have to check in maintenance to see if we have anything there, but I don't remember. I know we did it at some school, but I don't remember if Mulberry has it.
Oh.
It's kind of long.
It feels like we ought to have It's a Small World or some kind of thing.
Yeah, really.
Right, exactly. We have other projects coming up. We have the Borto Phase Two, that we are, we, we've shortlisted. The architect and construction manager already. We have the 26th classroom that you all approved at the last board meeting for Ben Hill Griffin. We haven't bid that as yet, request paid from the architect, or the, actually, we will use a prototype, right?
Yeah, we're using a prototype.
For the elementary school. Parlier will do the classroom addition.
Who will? Parlier?
Parlier.
Okay.
We'll be bringing that to the next board meeting.
You just flew over, is that a bunch of tennis courts? Do we have four? Okay.
And we have things for that is on your agenda tonight, for the replacement school on the Bailey site. So, those are all the three big projects that will be coming forward to you.
Soren via school board.
I know. I'm not one for those, right.
Well, I was going to ask, this is sort of, it's, it's on the agenda, but we might be able to just talk it out now. The, the replacement of the artificial turf at Bryant Stadium.
Yes.
I don't remember, I mean, I knew at some point we were going to have to do, do, do that. Is, is there an urgency to voting on that tonight? Can, can we have sort of an update on what the future plan for Bryant Stadium is? You know, we bought it, and there was some idea of making it, of having wider events on it, and, and I don't know if it might be, like, what's, what's, what's the, what's the urgency?
It's not an emergency. If you don't want to vote on it, it's the Thompson, but the thing is, it's timing for us. We have to change it so that the football, the school can play on it. So, if we're going to change it, we want to do it this summer or some, before football season.
Well, how, how long is, how long is it? I mean, it does delaying at a meet, a meeting to have a presentation on an effect of the, the-
You talk to the contractor, right, before, is it a high lead?
I don't believe one meeting would affect it so bad, if you're talking about, but it does need to happen this summer, if we're going to do it without affecting the upcoming football season.
So, so the plan is to do it once, once people have stopped playing on it for the, for the spring?
And I believe there's still some events that would, would normally be happening on it this summer, but they're going to just cancel those and make them go away while we're taking care of the studio.
Can we discuss that?
Yes.
How often do we buy astroturf for Lakeland High School's Bryant Stadium?
They, you want to talk about it?
Isn't it brand new? Is it one of those nine?
No, we're hoping that it'll have a warranty of 12 years with the-
50, okay, 12.
With the product that we're selecting.
What's on there now?
I don't know that, I just don't know if it wasn't involved. I don't know that we purchased that.
It's my point. When did we buy it?
I don't know, the city of Lakeland installed that, or we did, but I believe it was the city of Lakeland.
No, city of Lakeland.
We bought Bryant Stadium with it there.
Right.
So, I thought it was 50 years, you're saying 12. And when we bought it, we knew that it was end of its life, that we had to change it. As soon as we got it, we knew that we would have to upgrade it soon.
That was part of what, what was discussed.
Ms. Fields?
That was what I was going to say. When we were discussing a purchase in the property, we knew we were going to have to replace the turf, and my question is, what happens if we don't replace it?
People get hurt.
I, I, I understand. I just wanted your answer.
Currently, it's coming apart. And it's got some gaps, and there's some under drainage issues with, that's causing lumps in the field, so it definitely needs to be addressed. That's still have lived its life. So, we would either have to replace it or with new astroturf, and make some repairs to make it work, or we'd have to abandon it and go back to a grass field, which involves sprinkler systems warming this up.
Ms. Reynolds?
I know that, you said it's 12 years on the warranty. How many years has it actually been there? Do we know when it was installed by Lakeland?
We had all days, I think.
Well, I believe the original warranty was eight years, and I believe it's gone beyond those eight years into the 11, maybe 11 years.
But it's a different product that we're looking at this time, that would have a longer lifespan?
It's a different, it's a better product, if you would. They do still sell the eight-year warranty, but we feel like we'd be better off to go with the 12, because of the differential price. It's so minimal, but it just makes more sense to do that.
Ms. Wardney?
So, the almost, well, what is it, $400,000?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm. Does that include all those repairs underneath?
It does.
And do they come out and fix it, or do our folks have to fix them after?
It would be now.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I mean, if I recall this right, and this is why we probably have to have, should have a little discussion about it. The, when the, the city bought the product, and then it actually tore up in some places prior to its, its warranty, and so it was replaced partially, before we ever bought, bought it. It was pretty openly, I mean, it was very openly discussed that this was essentially, essentially a cost of the transaction.
It was way before me, because-
Right, correct, right.
I would have never voted to buy it, you know, so.
Well, but the alternative is Lakeland High School not having, not, not having- Well, but the alternative is Lakeland High School not having, not having the stadium. So, you know, let's.
Ms. Canning here?
Yeah, I support it. At this point, to be honest with you, having been out and watched some of the games, it's a safety issue in my mind, you know. Whether you, for the fact that we bought it or didn't, we did, it's ours. We need to take care of it and maintain it. And I'm not sure, correct me if I'm wrong, but if this was able to be done prior to summer, you might keep some events going forward. I don't know the timing of what it takes them or how long, but I would think if you have, if we're able to move forward with it, then is there an opportunity that we could receive some revenues because of working it in the proper timing? Because it's October.
Right.
I mean, possibly, because you hate to lose that revenue or impact other kids and organizations that look forward to using that facility. And that's part of why we did buy it, was to gain additional revenue. And that is another discussion for another day. You know what I'm saying? I've always said we need to maximize our marketing out there, and to me, that places an awesome opportunity. But, okay, that's for another day. But I really think, you know, with the safety concern, I'd like to see us move forward as soon as possible.
And we have been working with Dan Tow, but to identify that slot by time that would best fit our organization.
Correct.
The area that he came up with.
Okay. We'll talk back.
Okay, fine. I just thought maybe we could do it all at once and just.
Well, you have the discussion now. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sasha. And Mr. Turner and Mr. Altman, thank you.
Mr. Hill? Can we, at what point can we ask for that, for the new board members who are not here for the vote, for the field? I would like to know where we are with, with the process of creating revenue with it.
Would you like an update on that, on the work session?
I think so.
Well, that's basically, basically what I was suggesting.
I made a note.
Go through the history, but what the future is, et cetera.
But are we gonna hold this up to wait for that? No. Well, two different animals.
I'm okay with voting on it. It's fine.
Yeah, I think we should vote on it tonight.
I mean, as long as we're committed to having a.
Making it.
Well, I guess, yeah, okay.
Mr. Wilson, I'd like to revisit the legislative discussion.
Certainly.
If we could. We need to revisit that VAM. We have a little concern about the date. Dr. Eggs?
Yes, sir. Step off to call superintendent to make sure that I had a clear understanding for the reason why the original July date was picked. And what we were talking about was it has to do with us actually appealing school grades. Do we get initial ones? So keeping in mind that the only teacher that would be negatively affected, and I'm saying hypothetically, would be where you're looking at those schools with a low C grade. So I think that what superintendent is, is discussion, and that's the reason why that original date was, is that we don't even have the school grades yet. And we need to know the school grade before we ask for that data piece of it. And so usually, it's a couple of weeks after the data before the school grades come in. And so that was the rationale for the original July the thirty-first date. She doesn't really think, and she and I talked about it, and I have to concur, that it's a realistic ask. I don't think it's a realistic ask to get it by the end of June. Because the data will have just dropped in, and that was the original rationale for it. So I think that when you looked at the current legislative advice, and you looked at our procedure that we have to put in place for reviewing the teachers, that would be a realistic ask to have it on that July the thirty-first, and that was the rationale behind it. So she wanted to make sure that we revisited that, because that was what she said.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Ms. Townsend?
Mr. Townsend? Is the role of a political board, a board that is elected by the public, to say, we think it's ridiculous that your timetable can't be met by X time? Like, they give us all sorts of mandates that make no sense all the time. Not quite sure why we can't say, get your act together and get all your data out by June second, or whatever. I mean, I really don't care if it's fair to DOE or realistic to DOE. Again, I think what I mostly care about is, I mean, this is all the more reason to say, what we've done the last couple of years, don't use it in personnel decisions. And I'll just make that motion tonight. Whatever the date, the date is, is, you know, fine.
So Dr. Eggs, if we were able to switch it, what impact would that have? I mean, what if they said, okay, we'll do that?
July the thirty, the end of July?
The end of June.
I don't know that they can, and this is the reason why I don't know that they can. When you're looking at it now, and the way that testing has changed, you know, they pushed all the testing every bit that they could to make. They took and changed from computer testing back to paper and pencil, which is actually a better, I think better for the students. It is a better piece to it. But they can't get them all scored and back to us in a realistic timeframe. So I think that that's the rationale for, you know, hey, look, you're not getting us until the middle of August or the first of August. We need these before those kids walk in the door. I think that was the thought.
Or after they walk in.
Right. So I think that was the realistic ask.
Just what's happening.
And so would be the recommendation of staff that we go with July thirty-first.
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I had, I just asked Wendy, because I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if we could do that, and she's saying it's DOE. So either you take the stance of telling the DOE, we're not abiding by your rules, or we're following your rules, but we need it by this, we'd like it earlier by July, thirty-first.
I'd say we're not abiding by the rule, how about changing the rules?
I understand the desire to not follow the rule. Trust me, we will have to follow the rule with this in place.
That is.
Because of the, about the teacher certification, our certification, and the fact that I will turn the phones off, so.
Ms. Canning here?
Question. So we originally said July thirty-first, but we said that's a hardship. I heard y'all say that before you walked out to call.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because it's week ten days before school starts to ask someone to leave a potential school. Okay. Now we're saying we wished it could be June thirtieth, but you've provided more information that that may be an unrealistic ask. So what about July fifteenth? That would still give you a few more weeks.
I discussed that date with superintendent.
You did, okay.
If y'all will remember, we had to go back to the state board. Again, you're thinking about the grades and the turnaround plans, all that kind of stuff, the appeals.
Yes.
So I thought about that too, Ms. Canning.
Yes, sir.
And when she and I were going back and forth, having the discussion about it, she said, I still don't think we'll know for sure which schools. And so the which schools has to come first, and they're calculating and doing all the data piece. It's not perfect. I would, it would be better, but I think the third, end of July would be a lot better than what we've been having to deal with.
Thank you.
So that takes us back to the original.
Correct.
Mr. Townsend?
For the, for the record, let's not set up straw men in here. Nowhere on that sheet does it say, do not comply with what the VAM, what the VAM says. This is about saying, change the law so that it doesn't affect us. That is an entirely legitimate, really, it's only the only legitimate role we probably have. We're elected, this is a legislative, political document. Nobody said anything about not complying. I understand, believe me, I have come to understand that DOE has a lot more sway over superintendent's life and doctor eggs's life than we, than we, we do. They're, they, they have to, you know, that's, that's where the power of power lies. We are trying to tell our legislators, who are also elected, that this is a bad law, that they should change that law. The fact that they don't change that law is on them, and then we talk about it. That's how politics and pressure works. It's the reason why VAM is a little bit de-emphasized from where it was two year, two, two year, two, two years ago. I just want to be very, very clear again. Nobody said don't comply. Nobody said don't follow the rule. They said, this, this is about changing the rules. The rules are set up to harm our kids right now, period. And this is how they make us complicit in it? They, 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 you know, have you negotiate with yourselves so that you're fooling around with a week of getting, getting this thing back? And, and, you know, that's, particularly when the last couple of years, we've talked about eliminating it from personnel decisions. They're gonna read it as an endorsement. Well, we did what you wanted us to do. That's how they're gonna take, take it. And, you know, and then they're not gonna take any calls when, when the teachers who get transferred around have to deal with, deal with it, everybody's gonna call us, because that's how they want it set up. So anyway, again, I'll just make my amendment tonight, and we'll, we'll go for there. But I want to be clear. Doesn't say on that sheet, don't comply with the rules. No one's proposing, don't comply with the, with the rules. Proposing to change the rules because the rules are stupid and bad.
So, so where are we? We're going back to July thirty-first then?
The only reason we switched it was because we.
Right, thought.
Staff thought that was the way to go. Now we've heard from superintendent staff has agreed that we need to use July thirty-first.
Okay.
So we'll go with that, and we will have a continuing conversation about it. That's what, that's the item that will be before us tonight when we vote, and certainly.
Right, which is what you were saying.
Okay. Ms. Hill?
All right, item four.
Thank you, Dr. Eggs.
Yes, thank you.
For item four, Ms. I should provide that power to us. We'll start with Mrs. Fields.
Yes.
Over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fields. Item four, the Florida State Schools Assessment Report. Director Wiggins.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The information in the safe schools assessment is classified for official use only. It's protected from public disclosure, as exempt from public records. So I won't go into details of the actual assessment itself. I'm here to report to you that the assessments are required by statute to be completed for every school in the district, and then a district-wide assessment. We have completed our assessments as required by statute, and based on those findings, I want to just present a couple of recommendations that are pulled from the assessment itself. So just four areas, I'd say, part of the strategic planning from the assessment that I want to talk about. The first being perimeter security enhancement. As you know, the perimeter security enhancements are designed to protect staff and students and visitors and the building from any outside threat. That includes fencing, gates, bollards, and as Ms. Usher said earlier, the single point access. So based on the assessment's findings, we're doing well in that category. And the recommendation is just to continue fencing all of our schools and to complete the single point access. The next area is safety and security personnel. As you know, we're required to have a safe school officer in every school. We've met that mandate as well. We have an armed person in every school. And the recommendation is to simply maintain the current staffing level that we have to cover every school when school is in session. The technological security, which includes security cameras, social media monitoring, visitor screening and tracking, intercom systems, and the updated fire alarm panels. That is a long-term implementation, and it's gonna take a couple of years for us to make sure that all of our schools have all of those items in place. We are currently about done with putting security cameras, either upgraded or installing them in every school. So we're on track for that. The fire alarm panel is on schedule, but that, that schedule goes into twenty, late twenty-twenty. So that's the system where the delay is automatically installed into the system in the event that the alarm is triggered. We currently have visitor tracking and screening in every school. The Raptor system is up and running in every school to track any visitor that may visit our school. So on the technological standpoint, we're doing well. It's just gonna take us a longer period of time to reach our goals, but we should just continue to push forward. And as technology changes, make sure that we're staying on top of any of the new technology that we may need to enhance our security. The Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act also requires that all school-based personnel be trained in youth mental health awareness. That is designed basically to allow an adult to recognize a student that may be in crisis or struggling with some type of addiction or substance abuse. We are currently scheduled out, and that's another long-term project for us, to train all of our school-based personnel. Jim Maxwell and his team facilitate that training, and that's been ongoing since this law was enacted. And we're currently still on pace to try to get everyone trained in youth mental health awareness training. The other training that we need to continue is our current active assailant training, our drills, our fire alarm drills that we do, our active assailant drills that we do. We need to continue doing those monthly to ensure the staff and students know exactly what to do in event of an emergency where active assailant at our schools. So based on the assessment and the findings, those are the recommendations from the tool.
Ms. Miller?
Just have a question about the, the training, mental health training. I stopped by one of those. It was very informative, but do we have the numbers of who, how many we've trained? It seems like it's very slow.
It is, it is slow based. We've trained five per school at the beginning of the year, and that's, that's the number. We try to get is five during the year from every school, five staff members. So I don't have the exact number. I can get it from Jim Maxwell, but every year we try to.
Mike is waving behind you. Okay.
Try to pull these five from every school to be trained. I have six guardians left to be trained, so all of the guardians are just about completed, but we're still working on staff.
And we're also training charter. Are we training private or just charter?
Charter, I think, is scheduled, but they're on a separate schedule than traditional. So, but they are included in that training.
Okay, thank you.
The, the mental health department under Dr. Christy Olson leads up those trainings and scheduling them and everything. And like you said, five per school. We started last year. We trained about seven hundred staff members district-wide from the schools. Plus then, like you said, so far this year, all the guardians and just continuing to board. Charters are invited and actually required to participate because they have to meet the same standards. The only ones that don't participate in ours are Lake Wells Charter, New Beginnings, those that wrote their own mental health plans.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions?
Yes, I'm trying to find an email somebody sent me.
Ms. Fordney?
It was something about the booklets on the.
Checklist, emergency checklist.
Yes, and how they are being torn off the walls in classrooms and, you know, I just.
If you could forward it to me, I'll certainly look into.
I certainly will. What was her name again?
The checklist are being delivered now. There's a place by every door where we have had them installed. If that's not working, then that's the first I've heard of it, and I will look into it.
Yeah, and I had the actual email, and I'm gonna find it. I'll hand it to you for now.
Okay.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend, the jail. All right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Wilson, I recommend that we take a break before we get into information items.
Okay.
Take a.
Ten-minute break?
Ten-minute break.
Okay, we're gonna get started again, please.
I don't know. I was shocked the other day. Can't address my new.
All right. Mr. Hill? You, we have some information items, so I guess, are there any, are there any questions about the information items?
Correct.
Maybe that's where flies.
Mr. Townsend?
There doesn't seem to be a school improvement plan attached to that.
So, no, there's not. I've got an update for you, yes, sir. Talked to Pat Barnes. He's not present. They just released those from the state. Each board member will receive one on a flash drive. It'll be sent to your office tomorrow. So you'll have those to look over. And then please make a note that they will be needed to, they'll need board approval on the November twelfth. Board is what I understand. Question?
I had that same question, and again, I, new board member, not real bright sometimes. Information items, I did not realize that you have to, like, bring it up, otherwise, I was waiting for head start last.
Time.
Time. And I saw them here, and then all of a sudden, they were gone, and we never mentioned it. And I thought we were supposed to get something from them verbally.
No, it's information.
Well, we, we.
Typically, right?
We are, yes, but we are supposed to get a report from them periodically. We are, yes, but we are supposed to get a report from them periodically, but not at every-
Okay. So, I would, I, I guess I will just look closer, and if they're on there, I will ask them to come up. Is that how we handle it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, uh, 'cause, uh, I was fortunate enough with a couple of other folks to go to that, uh, no, no small matter, and Head Start is super, super important. So, uh, I wanted to make sure I put that out there.
So we'll get those over.
Early learning.
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
Fine.
Related to the school improvement plan, we talked briefly about the, the test calendar a couple of meetings ago. Did that get, I don't think we actually voted on that there, right? Anyway, it's like a-
I think you voted on it tonight.
I, I didn't see it on the agenda, 'cause I, I was looking for it.
I just got to get out in the conversation with Andy, it's supposed to be on there. I thought it was on there or not.
Okay.
What, what is it again, sir?
I would-
You check into that.
Right now.
And while we're waiting, any other questions about information items?
I have a question on the quarterly report, and I don't know, I might have to hold off unless someone else in the superintendent's office has information. I'm just curious for questions that come up in the community. When it, when we lump things together for athletic clothing for $190,000, is it dispersed to what schools?
Jason, would you have the answer to that question?
Is that to one school? Is that to regional, a region?
I'm not asking whether it was all that specific before, but I did answer it.
And you can email it, that's fine. It's just, and there's athletic supplies and stuff for $145,000. It would be nice to, you don't have to tell me specifically, but it would be a difference if it's going to one or two schools, or if it's going to a region, or certain, people will ask, constituents will ask, and that's why I'm asking. Um, especially with equity and athletics is such a big topic amongst our constituents. Yeah, I had one more question on that. Um, it'll come to me as I-
Well, go ahead, Ms. Fortney. Well, thank you.
I did not have the authority to pass it along, but okay.
Obviously, I'm new today, so.
(laughing).
Taking advantage of the rookie, I see. Okay.
Oh, I had the same exact question, uh, and especially, uh, from the cheerleaders at different high schools. Uh, that was really where I've been getting that, uh, question about, uh, some apparently have to buy their own uniforms, so I, I don't know. So the equity thing, but I, if you go on down, 'cause I had the same question about subscription to Science, NGSSS for 52. Uh, how many schools, it, it, and I looked them up on Google, and, um, interesting program. How many schools or seats, is that a license for our entire district? I couldn't, because it apparently was $10 a, a head, so.
I will get you answers here. Is there any more questions?
Because, again, the lumped-in thing, it's, it's hard to track. Instructional materials lumps.
Ms. Hill?
I've got those to you. More questions? Ms. Miller? Do we have any more?
I have, actually, I think Dr. Sanki can answer this. For the $189,000 renewal of subscriptions for IEP software, frontline ta- what is our IEP platform?
Enrich. Frontline is just their company name, it's changed a million times.
Who, who is the state? What is the state?
Here.
Here, isn't that free?
Yes.
If we use Enrich?
It doesn't have all the components and everything up to date that Enrich does or any of the other platforms do, so.
Other districts our size use Enrich?
There's, uh, I don't know, our size, I'd have to check on that. I know there's other districts that use, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a much bigger discussion than-
We'll do that over coffee one day, Dr. Sanki, how about that?
Ms. Fortney? Ms. Fortney, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Mr. Hill, uh, and then the last question I have is the attendance kiosks and mobile tardy devices for information system and technology. For almost 63,000, is that like some sort of update of software, or?
It is. I'm gonna let Dr. Barrios.
Well, that was great.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Barrios. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you.
So these, um, are actually attendance kiosks that every high school and middle school will get that will actually be in, uh, do tardy passes. So they'll do swipe entry, it'll auto-mark it in focus, and then they've got handheld devices, which are scanners, that, um, we're initially putting one kiosk in, in every middle and high school, and two handheld scanners at the middle, and three at the high school as a starting point. Um, the, the handheld ones will allow them to be, um, mobile, they find a kid, they swipe their, um, ID, it'll show them where they're supposed to be, they can print out a tardy pass. Um, so they're, they're actually new proprietary devices that Focus just came out with about six months ago. Um, we're hearing great, schools are excited about this. Um, so we actually have Thursday as a setup day, and we will start installing them next Tuesday and Wednesday in our first, uh, our first install. Um, and Focus will be here for the first two days. And then once we get this deployed, I imagine they're going to want possibly one in the media center or one in the clinic where they can easily scan, check kids in and out. And it will, uh, it, it talks directly with Focus, so that's what that's about.
So it's not like, it's not like a tardy, like, from class to class, or it can be class-to-class tardy swiping?
It, it would be, um, like in the main office, if you're late to, if you're late to school, it's not gonna be, I mean, you'd have to have one in every classroom if you were gonna try to mark them tardy that way. I think we'll, uh, in a couple of weeks, we can probably better-
I can just write a pass in five seconds and go here, go to class.
Well, this is actually gonna mark it in focus, though.
It goes right in focus, you could track it with the technology.
Which the teacher is gonna have to, like, probably then make the phone call, right? Never mind.
Oh, yeah.
No, I, yeah. Retardies, and you gotta call home, you know, so. Maybe it should automatically call.
Is that John Hill? Is that the policy?
It varies school, school.
Oh. I was gonna say, I know that works.
It is, it is.
No, but my point is-
It is not a systematic part of that policy.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that it makes somebody's life easier, but it probably creates work for somebody else.
Well, the problem is, if you have a child that's tardy or around the campus in an unauthorized area for their own safety, you have to determine, are they on campus, off campus, where they at? And, and if you can't account for them, you gotta, like, do your best, and then eventually, can't account for them, you gotta call home, so the parents know that, that you, uh-
I, I get it, Mr. Hill.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not on that.
Thank you, embarrassed. So now we're moving on to the, um, review of the, of this evening's-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I had, I just have one question about the, um, information where we're, we're reviewing, um, employee handbooks. Were you reviewing charter employee handbooks?
Yes.
It's part of their contract.
Part of their contract.
So it's a member to the contract.
Ms. Savannah? Thank you.
Sorry. Um, the charter handbooks that are on the agenda for today for information and for review are attached to their actual contracts. Therefore, they do need to be reviewed, and it does require a contract modification because it's part of the initial contract that was approved. So as we move forward with the new standard contract, handbooks are not included as part of the contract, so you will not see those. But until we get all of our schools on the new contract that's issued by the, you know, the standard contract by the state, you will continue to see modifications.
And what are you looking for when you're reviewing them?
So we do, uh, the charter office does an initial review, just making sure they're in compliance, it's nothing, um, completely out of line with traditional practice. We also then, um, reach out to HR to perform another review, just so that we can ensure that we are not in violation and that everything is in line with traditional HR practices. Um, Mr. Warren provided that review for us, and he gave glowing remarks. He did have a few recommendations and suggestions to share with them. However, we cannot enforce them, we just make them a, uh, recommendation that they practice.
Thank you. You know what it looked like to me? It looked like they're not allowed to use their cellphones in class or be on social media when I read it. Teachers.
Okay, ready for, we're now ready for a review of the, uh, agenda for this evening's board meeting. We have a number of recog- special recognitions. It looks like the Kathleen High Teachers was at, was scratched. We have three sets of minutes. Any questions, comments about the minutes?
The, it was last work session on the 17th, I believe. Sorry, I broke my internet earlier, and it's now not letting me open it. Um, but it says that I referred to Pasco County's work sessions, and it should have been City of Lakelands. It was on the last page.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. So that will, that's something we'll want to read into the region system. Yeah? And I'm sure Wendy will make that change for you. Items C-17 through C-20, questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Um, I'm a board, board member tr- travel, and this has nothing to do with any particular report, but, right, I, if there was somebody who did it before, I, I missed it. I, I'm just wondering, do we, do we wanna pull those out and put them on the re- the, the re- the regular, just for the sake of somebody saying, oh, you're trying to sneak that through, or whatever? I mean, I, I'm, I, I just wanted to, to re- to raise it. I'll, I'll-
They, by-
What is it on there?
By state law, beginning July first.
Because it's a state law, you have to, if it's over a certain amount of money.
If it's over $500, it's state, or out of, or anything out of state.
Yeah, it's, it's them, I mean, if, like, if you go over to the FSBA, but you don't stay, then you don't have to do it. It's, it's cheap.
If, if you're paying for your conference and the travel to get there, I believe you still do, if it's over $500.
Right, if it's over, but it's, I don't, I don't, anyway, it's, it's a low level, I mean, it's-
It's a new state law.
There's no one?
I don't, yeah, I don't mind that it's on the consent, but I asked her about to share with us, so when we do get phone calls, 'cause you know there's people that micromanage these agendas and will call me and ask me what all of it's about, I would like to be able to tell them what's happening. So she'll have the great to share with us what she's doing.
So I am, the first week in November, I am going to Nashville for the Academies of Nashville study. Um, I am the board member representative on the Academy's Board. Um, so it is, they typically send anyone on the executive board, so this year, the new executive board members are myself, Gary Boyer, and I believe there's one more. There's also a couple of new staff members, and they have a couple of staff members in their department that have not gone before. So I think there's eight of us total. Um, it's part of, I think it's the Perkins Grant, correct me if I'm wrong?
It is Perkins.
Perkins, Perkins Grant?
You can do it out of Perkins Title I.
Yes, it is the Perkins Grant. Uh, but it's, we actually will have time to meet with their Academy's Advisory Board and go over kind of their policies and best practices and what they're doing, um, which is some direction that I think we could very much use right now as we're kind of transitioning to new board leadership. Um, so I am very excited to be able to bring back kind of what we're learning and doing. Um, they're the model, but I would like to think that in the next five to 10 years, that Polk County's gonna be the model. So I'm gonna go and get all of their information and bring it back, so we can do it better here.
And she's nice enough to pay for her own plane ticket.
Yes, and I'm paying for my own plane ticket. Thank you, Ms. Fortney.
And so that brings us back to Mr. Townsend's-
I think that's probably a good, good way to do it. Like, I mean, it was more, more just be open about what we're doing.
Transparent, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, it's, it's less consent versus, I think that's a, a good solution for the future.
Okay.
I do, too. So we're gonna leave it on consent?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I, I had someone, C-16, Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I think I've actually pulled it off there.
Yeah, that, we moved that to the regular agenda, it's down at the bottom.
Okay, 'cause if I could get an answer to that now, I could, uh, nevermind. Tell me what you want me to do.
Well, we'll be there in just a minute. We'll get there.
All right, shut up.
It's there. I'll remind you when we get there.
All right.
Um, uh, we have cash donations, item C-21 through C-50, and of course, we're always grateful for our community, uh, leaders and community, committee members who, who are so very beneficial to our, our school district and our individual schools. Any questions, comments about the cash donations? We have some non-cash donations, item C-51 through C-57, any questions, comments?
Say that again? What, through what numbers?
Uh, C, the non-cash donations, item C-51 through C-57.
Oh, that gets down into, no, I'm sorry, I, I misread. Forgive me.
Yeah, we're okay. And that take, brings to the, brings us to facilities and operations items, item C-58 through C-65, questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Um, two things. Uh, one, you know, I'd like to have the, the HR recommendations on the, the, the reg- the regular, I think that got stuck back on, on there some, somehow.
Which one is that?
C-66, 67, 68.
Oh, I thought last time we agreed to put those, put those back on the consent agenda.
We did, we did go?
Yeah, we did. No, last meeting, we talked about that. And, and you agreed that it would be okay to go back on the consent.
Did I?
The challenge we have, if we put them on the regular agenda, then, then it creates a challenge for us when we recognize them, because we're recognizing them before they've actually been appointed.
That's a point, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, additionally, the, the Lake Wales, uh, the, the Lake Wales High, I, Lake Wales Senior Association, it's a Lake Wales High project that's worth noting, I, I think, they're, they're, they've, they've, they have representation on the sales, the sales tax committee and are often asking about, you know, their, their, their fair share of stuff. So just wanted to point, point that, point that out.
Okay. Um, item C-66 through C-68, any questions or comments other than those that we already discussed?
Um.
Or, I'm back to that. Um, let's go with item C-69 through C-70, and then we'll get to Ms. Fortney's items. Any questions about items C-69 or C-70? Ms. Fortney, that brings us to your item C-16.
Right, um, I, I just, when I looked at that and read it, uh, I, I would love to see something on that about, um, research-based and age-appropriate instructional activities added to ensure some teacher autonomy in the student progression plan on Part A. I mean, it talks about providing target instructional support for students. Because I get, like, I don't know how many folks reaching out to me that are in our pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and they're talking about how what we are doing is really not age-appropriate, and it's like we're testing punishing them. And I've spoke to you about that, Dr. Aix. And I just wanted that maybe somehow integrated. I, I don't know how we would to give some of our folks some leeway to actually teach what they went to school for.
Is, is that a longer conversation that maybe you could have?
I've had it. That's why I had to bring it up here. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. We've already discussed the legislative platform. Certainly, anybody have any comments about that? I think we, we addressed that. Item R seventy-one, nominees to the attendance boundary committee. I have a question. Would you all like me to read those names or would each board member like to say something about their nominee?
I think you just read them.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Items R seventy-two through R seventy-six. Questions, comments? Items R seventy-seven through R eighty. We have items R eighty-one through R eighty-three. That includes item C sixty-three, which is Bryant Stadium, and we've had some discussion about that already. Questions, comments?
And what numbers?
Items R eighty-one through R eighty-three, including item C sixty-three.
Already said what I needed to say about Bryant Stadium. And eighty, already, R eighty-two and eighty-three, again, those just look like, like salary increases to me. You know, I, I don't know. Just, again, look like salary increases. But I'm.
Items R eighty-four through R eighty-five. We've got an item added in there. Did we discuss that, Ms. Worthington? The Uniform Assessment Calendar.
Yeah, there's, there it is. Like, I didn't see it before, but I just wanted to know if it's there. It's fine.
Okay. Is that on my sheet? Okay, I'll need to add that.
Was that added? Was that not on there before? Did it, did we just add it? Like, was it not?
It's no, it's, it's item number eighty-five.
Right, no, I, I know, okay.
Well, for, you asked the question, was it just added?
Just added.
It was just added.
Okay, good. So it's, so it wasn't crazy.
No, it's good.
All right.
So, well, maybe. And that is just the statewide assessment calendar, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Required, and I think you separated out.
No, I have, I, I've heard it. So it doesn't include any kind of progress monitoring?
And we have some policy updates. Mr. Bridges, if it's okay, I'll ask you to read those to the record.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Dodge has provided me with her, with her roster, and I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments about this evening's agenda? Yes, sir.
Ms. Fortney will hit with my own area that she's concerned about with the language. She'll do it right after this, I'll look at it real quick.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Just a minute.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a discussion about the Lake Wales zoning, and I think, Mr. Townsend, you asked that to be added.
Yeah. Okay, so, so we're going to do this before, before word of comment, is that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. What, what came off at the strategic, strategic plan discussion was a, was how can we move forward now that pretty settled that, that McLaughlin is going to be McLaughlin, McLaughlin, you know, Lake, Lake Wales can't run it as a external operator? And I think all, all the various things that have been flowing back and forth. You know, I don't, I don't know what the status of making it a, a high school is, but putting all that aside, how do we move forward constructively out there that, first of all, channels the most possible kids into Lake Wales High, which just makes sense, no, no matter what one thinks of the school or not? And, you know, I think a very easy thing to do would simply put it, be to put on our web, webs, webs, website, the zone for like, for, for Lake Wales High, representing Lake Wales High as the default high school for Lake Wales. And if a child doesn't, when, if a child doesn't apply and they come to one of our schools, we tell them no, go back to Lake Wales and apply if, if, if they're from a, a Lake Wales zip code. And if Lake Wales denies them entry, then they can bring that denial back to us. And that's the circumstance under which we would enroll, 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 enroll them. That's, that's one, one idea. I think we could also put on our web, our website, I mean, I, I think that's really the easiest, the easiest thing to do in the short term because there's only one, one high school and it's centrally located and it makes sense. Everybody seems, seems to agree that Lake Wales kids should go to Lake Wales High, and yet we haven't been able to make this happen. Yeah, that should be the easy one to take care of. The slightly more complex one would be making the elementary schools zone, drawing zones for them as well. So when you come in from out of county and you move into Lake, to Lake, to Lake Wales, you could put in your address on our zoning and you see which is, which of their zoned elementary schools you, you would, you would be zoned for. The complicated factor in that is Spook Hill because how do you build Spook Hill into, to that? So I, I would kind of do that second. And I think thirdly, I think we, we should phase out busing out of Lake Wales to the extent practicable. And I understand what some of the, the legal concerns would be, but this is primarily an administrative question. I don't think there are a whole lot of kids in, who live in the Lake Wales area who are actively choosing to leave. There are a few. I mean, I, I know there's one really good athlete who just left to go play, play ba, ba, basketball at Barto High. You know, there, there are a few. But mostly, these are kids who don't realize they have to apply, don't, and nobody's really recruiting them to go apply. You know, they're, they're kind of, we should be telling them, go apply. Like, instead of busing a child eighteen miles to Floral, you know, as, as we recently did for a year from a school that, that this child could see, we should be sending that child to that school. We should, we, we can do that administratively. Now, that child says, no, 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 I really want to come to this school, then that's a, a different thing. The stuff I'm talking about are administrative speed bumps, administrative incentives designed to keep Lake Wales kids into Lake Wales Community Schools. On top of that, we got to address the fact, I think, that Jenny Howard Wilson's at less than sixty percent of this capacity. Just, just, just like McLaughlin is, the, the difference between McLaughlin and Jenny Howard Wilson is that McLaughlin is a zone school, and if we, a zone school, last resort, default school, if we take away that somehow, there would be no middle school in Lake Wales for, that takes everybody and keeps everybody as a matter of course. So that's sort of the, the situation. Why don't we start with putting the Lake Wales Zone on the website as the zoned high school and then not letting kids into our schools until they show Lake Wales High won't take them? I mean, that, that's a pretty direct thing to do.
Excuse me, Ms. Fields?
I have a question for Wes. Wes, can we legally do that? Can we legally tell a parent if they want to go to a school outside of Lake Wales that they can't?
No, ma'am.
So how do we get around that?
Well, we can certainly put on the website a, a depiction of the former attendance zone for Lake Wales High School. There, there is no issue with that. You could tell students, if you wish to go to Lake Wales High School, you have to apply to go to Lake Wales High School. But no student can be compelled to go to a charter school under Florida law. It is a school of choice by definition. And the statute specifically requires school districts to make alternative arrangements for students who do not wish to attend the, the conversion charter school.
What? Ms. Reynolds, I'm sorry.
I had asked the question, this question of Carolyn earlier, and to be fair, it was about twelve thirty-five and she was eating her lunch when I approached her. So if she hasn't gotten an answer, I completely understand. But as far as the online maps go, it used to be on our online maps. And my understanding is that when we switch to Focus, that's what changed it. Are we looking to get it where we can plug that back into Focus and to show what the options are for Lake Wales almost as an overlay? If you live in Lake Wales, these would be your Lake Wales Zone schools?
That's exactly what we're working on. And unfortunately, lots of people are in lots of places right now, so I wasn't able to get a definitive answer. I know we've talked about this in the past with regard to Focus, so I know it's something that we're looking at. If you recall, and those of you that weren't on the board a while ago probably never had a reason to look at Zone Finder, but under the old Zone Finder, we had Lake Wales listed first. And then as a secondary, what their opt-out zone would be if they chose not to apply or there were no seats available or for whatever reason they didn't get into Lake Wales. So we are looking at making that happen. I don't want to speak for Focus, but I would think that we should be able to do something like that.
Focus isn't related to it at all, I don't think, is it?
Well, we used to use Zone Finder. We've now discontinued using that so that we have a system that now interfaces with Focus, so information. So it is, it is indirectly related to Focus. I'm not saying it's a Focus system. I'm saying that the system has to.
That's where it's getting its information.
To work with Focus. And apparently, the existing Zone Finder did not work with Focus.
And thank you for that because I think that is an incredibly important first step to solving some of the issues we have there.
Absolutely.
I see this a little differently. I, I'm in agreement with you. I think Lake Wales is a charter school system. It's not just a charter school. I, I think we need to find a way to work with DOE to zone it somehow. I know currently, there are no laws to do that on the books, but I would offer that we need to find a way to, to work with the DOE or the state, or state legislators to find a way to affect a zone similar to what Mr. Townsend is saying. So those would be my thoughts. Ms. Miller?
Just from what I hear from the Lake Wales community, we've been talking about adding it back for a long time and they don't see what, and really, the advocates for doing this are coming out of that side of, out of the community because people move into that town, go to the website, and have no idea those schools even exist. So if it's an issue, how long is it going to be take to resolve so we can see these back up? Like, this is over a year now that I've been talking about it.
And again, that, that's not my area of expertise. I mean, that's.
Because Lake Wales is saying, yes, please, tell these people these schools are here. So we need to, you know, I agree that we need to let them know and then figure out, you know, how to get them there. But they're going to have to know Spook Hill. You're going to have to explain what the system is, I guess, on the website for them to put in their address and see where it goes. But right now, the question of why they're missing, I know we didn't do it with intent, but it looks like it was done with intent from that side of the district, county.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, this is sort of similar to what I've said this morning. I'm not talking about a legal issue here. I'm talking about taking Lake, 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 Lake Wales at their word. They say they want to be the default zone school of their kids. They say, say that. So let's take them at their word. Let's have a protocol in place, not a legal requirement, a protocol in place. Child comes to register at Winter Haven High or Haynes City High or Barto High. Before we register them, we make them acknowledge, hey, you have a school back there that you really should go, go to. It's your, it's your home, home, homeschool. Send them back. And if Lake Wales High says, no, sorry, you missed the deadline, you can't get in, get it in writing and then come, come, come back to us. If somebody wants to sue us over that, then let them sue us over, over, over that. Like, it'll, it'll be over in a second. You know, it's, it's not a, I'm talking about, again, administrative protocols. This won't work with McKeel or Berkeley or any of those schools because they don't make any bones about what they do. Like, Lake Wales has a point of view. The point of view is that we are a community school system. That's why we have Lake Wales in our name. You know, let's, let's see. And, I mean, they should, I would think the Lake Wales folks would want us to have a, a, a protocol in place, sending, sending, sending kids back. And more than that, we should want to. It's not in any of our advan, it, it's not good for us to have any child end up at Winter Haven High or Haynes City High who lives in Lake Wales, like, by accident. Like, that, that, there needs, there needs to be intent there because that's a big, big decision. Once you're being bused fifteen miles away, it's a big decision and it's hard to get back. So that's what I'm talking, talking about, not, not a legal requirement, an administrative protocol.
And I'd like to respond to that. I'm, I'm going to respectfully disagree with that because if, if I'm a parent and I take time off work and I believe my child is supposed to go to some school because that's where I think they're going, and I, and I go there and then they send me back, I'm going to, I think that's a terrible imposition on, on the parents. I think if we, I, now, I think that's different than saying, hey, by the way, did you know that there's a charter school that can serve you in Lake Wales? And giving them the option, I, I have no problem with that. But to say, look, you can't come here until you go back there, and they're moving, they're bouncing back and forth like a pinball? I, I don't think that's.
Well, I'll settle for the first part, protocol then. Let's, let's, let's start there. You are, we are required to notify them that there is a school in the community that they live.
Ms. Reynolds?
My comment was going to be very similar to yours in that I'm, I think charter law requires us, I don't think we can compel them, and by saying you have a school over there, I think it would be a little bit, which I don't know, Wes, what your opinion would be, but I think that's borderline compelling them to go to the charter school. I also think that I have several parents calling me saying, I want to let you know that I didn't get in and I live in Lake Wales, but I also don't want to send my kid to a school that they've been told they're not wanted. And I think we see that even more when they're dismissed from some of our charter schools, that the parent comes to the school saying, you know, I've been dismissed. Someone from the administration of Winter Haven High School calls, I'm sure, your office and says, this student's saying they were dismissed. What does that, you know, they can't be dismissed from charter schools and the parent will, so we can tell the parent, you can't be dismissed, they have to keep you unless they're expelling you. But when they're threatening expulsion and things like that, the parent doesn't feel comfortable sending their student to a school that the administration clearly does not want them there and now is going to be out to try and find other ways to get them out. So I don't know that we can require students to apply or require students to show us that they've been denied because I do think that's part of choice. And I know you chose for your son to go to the public school in your neighborhood, that that's his choices to go, you know, it's their own choice.
Again, you're, I think you're addressing things I'm not really saying. Again, I'll shift over to, I'll start there. That the kids, that there is a protocol in place. If you show up with, with a, the zip code for whatever, you know, do you know that you have a school in it? Did, did you apply to it? I mean, if not, if, if nothing else, we should know. Like, be, be aware of it for, for ourselves because those, those kids are going to require extra support. I mean, if, if they come, they come here. You know, it's, it's a, yeah, I, I, honestly, it seems like a, a no-brainer to me. I mean, I, I agree with, I mean, ultimately, the, the solution is the zone, the zone, the zoning thing, but this is what we can do administratively in the meantime. And it doesn't harm anyone to say, you've got a school back in Lake Wales that's much closer to you, that you don't have to be on, on a bus for fif- fifteen miles each way. Are you aware of that? And, you know, I mean, that's not compelling anybody to do, to do anything. In fact, if, if you're going to argue choice, that's what choice is. You know, you, you will let, make people aware of what their, their, their choices are. I just also think Lake Wales is different from most choice schools, so they say, and we should test them on, on that.
Ms. Miller?
In the past, we've asked for data collection and I've been told we don't collect data. I could see making some kind of form similar to a packet of, you know, registration, that form, and it becomes our data collection piece. They can say, yes, I know, I chose not to go. They don't have to tell why they didn't choose to go. Or they could, I, the people I hear from will tell you, I didn't know, I went there, they said I couldn't, they didn't, wouldn't meet my needs. The kids that end up at Floral are the kids who are told they can't meet their needs. So if that, if we start collecting data on that, it will help when, because Lake Wales is a very split community. There are people that believe the kids aren't being turned away and they're all there. We have no data source to tell them differently. So I think if you did some kind of protocol, if it's with the registration packets, I don't know, it would have to be very, it would have to, I mean, Wes would have to approve whatever we're doing, just to collect, you did know, you did not know, you chose, you did not choose. It would, you know, would help the argument with the people who just have no resource of you.
Also, what happens to the kids who come in mid-year? I mean, if you miss, I mean, we should, is, is there something written in stone about when the application process has to be done?
For them?
For, for entry? And what, stone at a, at a state level, stone? Like, is, is there, can they, can they choose to have, have, can we choose, can we choose to have it in the contract and ask them to do it? That if someone comes mid, mid-year, they get, they get into their, to their, to their schools? Is that a thing that, that we can do?
Wes is fervently right.
Do some work.
So if, if, perhaps I can give some context to this. So Lake Wales High School has a certain number of seats. We have that discussion annually about, about seats. And what happens is they have a priority for the students who live in Lake Wales. And then once those students who have applied during their opening moment window, once that window, once they've taken all of the Lake Wales students that applied during that window, then they can take the students who don't live in Lake Wales but who have also applied. And so to answer your question, it's less about an application window and more about when the school is full. So if they take thirteen hundred, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, thirteen hundred Lake Wales students, but they have two hundred and eighty-five seats left, and they fill those with non-Lake Wales students, then they are full. And the student who comes and moves in, just, it's not a question of will they take them or will they not take them? It's they've reached their capacity as identified by their, by their charter.
So, but say they're not full. So, but say they're not full? And, uh, a kid comes into, moves into, to Lake Wales after the, the application day? I'm, what happens, what, what happens to that, to that, to, to that kid if they go to, to Lake Wales to apply?
Um, hopefully, Lake Wales continues to take applications all year long.
That's what I'm looking for. That's, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
They can set their own window.
That's, that's what I'm looking for.
Totally up to them.
And so-
But at Lake Wales High School, as an example, they, so they, if you recall, they haven't met the capacity that we approved them for.
Right.
But they're saying that for their programming capacity
Support capacity.
For purposes, they are full.
Well, if the law, if, if the law dic- if the law dictates priority, we should make them say, this child with priority is not getting in because we're full, before, before, before we take a kid. We should have that in, in writing.
Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Reynolds had some, a comment.
My comment was going to be very similar to what Carolyn said. When, two years ago at our July meeting, we approved an additional one hundred and twenty seats for Lake Wales High School, because they wanted to get all of those Lake Wales kids off of their list. We approved it. Whether or not all those seats went to Lake Wales kids, I think, is still to be determined. Um, but they did not fill, they didn't reach the capacity that we set for them by eighty-five students. So they have room to accept thirty more kids if they come in in the middle of the year. It may not be, in their minds, they don't think that they have seats, but according to state law, they have seats. That if they wanted to accept the kid that moves here in December, they could. But it is good faith in accepting the kid that moves here in December, that's been uprooted from wherever they were, that, I mean, I think we tried to do that two years ago, and it hasn't proved to be-
Well, what I'm ta- talking about doing, it, I agree. I'm talking about enforcing that.
And I-
And, and I, I think I- We, we enforce it by putting an administrative block in, in, in front. And, and we say, we make them turn those kids away, based, because I think that's illegal. If they don't have the seats. I mean, if, if they have the seats, and they have the prior- or, ority, and they have a kid who comes in mid-year, then I, then I, then I, then I think that's, 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 that's on them.
Ms. Miller?
I think it's, when you talk about structure and how they build supports, they do differently than what we do. It's part of their charter. Lot of co-teaching, a lot of, you know, um, support going on there. So they need to know ahead of time, you need to plan for your school to be full. I mean, I think if they, they could easily do it. We just had the Lake Alfred School have to do it, even though they're not chartering. We took teachers off of them, which changed their support delivery. But if the planning process would have prevented what happened there, the planning process could preempt what may happen at Lake Wales. If you have that many seats, you're taking dollars. You're using those dollars to, to support fewer students. That doesn't mean you don't have the capability. We're not talking hundreds of students that would come. You know what I mean? You're not, we don't have any data, because we haven't collected data. But to add the few students that would come mid-year, it should already be built into a support model to do that. I don't think it's taking, it's going to have to be their planning process.
Ms. Reynolds?
I just want to clarify something. So the dollars are based on the students that are actually there, not the seats? Is that right?
You're, right.
Okay.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding what you were saying.
So what they're doing with support level te- because they do a lot of that, different than we do. And so they can shift that for students that are added. And they would get the added, well, it depends when they come in. But they would get added dollars if they came in certain times of the year.
Right. Um, what I want to clarify is there's a difference between program capacity, just like at all of our other schools, or charter schools. There's a difference between program capacity and fish capacity. And so while we set a limit on how many students they can take, there isn't anything in the law that says you must take. You know, that is part of their flexibility as a charter school, to be able to choose how many students they choose to take, up to that degree upon capacity. So if what you're suggesting is they hold, I think I'm hearing correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, they hold some seats, even in their program capacity, for students who are going to come in here?
I'm not even, well, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't presume to tell them what, what, what to do. I am pro- pro- proposing, they say in writing, this child can't go here. And then, so we know it. And like, that's, that's the, I mean, that's, that's the-
That's the form.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, what I'm, what I'm looking for, I, I mean, I, this is all stuff that's been long es- es- established. I'm looking for, how do we make sure what happened at Hillcrest, for instance, when we had a child who could see Hillcrest, um, that they managed to ignore for an entire year while they enrolled the other kid? Um, and then was bused to, to Floral? Um, and, uh, the solution, the, the answer to that was, well, they, they didn't, they didn't apply. Um, if we, you know, as soon as that became, that anecdote became public, that child got in. Um, I think you make people own what they do, and that's how you create the incentives to put pe- put people in the schools where they ought to be. I'm talking about administrative fix- fixes. Um, administrative bumps that create incentives for Lake Wales to do what it says it wants to do. Again, the law doesn't really matter, because you would never be able to impose it on, on McKeel, or, or Burke, or Burke, or Berkeley, or the charter schools that are sort of self-consciously exclu- 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 exclusive. Lake Wales holds itself up as not being that kind of mo- model. It, it holds itself up as being us for Lake Wales. Let's test it. Let's, let's not, by accident, have kids being bused out of, out of there. Let's send them back, um, to try to apply. And when that doesn't work, then, then we take, we take them.
Ms. Reynolds?
I'm, I'm, I'm making it publicly known, I'm not in support of that. I'm not in support of forc- forcing a parent to, to make, uh, an option of going back to a school that they might not want to go to. And I think, no matter how you look at it, the law does matter. It matters to me. And, um, I like the idea that Ms. Miller has for that, when the enrollment process, uh, is initiated, and if they don't receive the students, that there can be some type of documentation, and they may be going back and dealing with that. But I am not in support of forcing a parent to do anything.
Ms. Reynolds?
Um, I just want to go back to what Ms. Bridges was saying. Um, I think what you were asking is, are we, as far as saving the seats for students, leaving room in their program capacity, that's the end goal, that's what we want. Is that correct? That they would, I mean, that's what I would think I would, I want, is that that they leave thirty seats, so that if somebody moves here in March, they can enroll somebody in March, because they have room at their school to enroll the kid that just moved in across the street?
If that's, I mean, well, if that's the, the mechanism they have to do to do it, fine. I, I don't, I don't really care what the mechanism is. I care what the outcome is. They, they can absorb kids that come in.
So here's where we are with this. We, we, we've got a great start, and thank you for that. And that's a zone map that says, hey, if you're in this area, these are the schools that you're, so we're going to start with that. I, I think this is an important ongoing conversation, but I also think we need the superintendent here to help, help move that forward.
And, and for the record, I'm fine with what you and you just said about, like, I mean, it, it doesn't, ideally, I'd, I'd probably be a little more coercive, but I'm willing to be
No.
You know, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm I'm wel- I'm willing to start with just any kind of speed, speed bump.
Data collection, a good data collection.
But, but that also creates the speed, speed, speed bump. I don't want kids who don't know, or forgot to apply, or that, that people are ignoring, who suddenly are inconvenienced, and they're our most vulnerable kids to begin with. They're, they're torn away from their communities, and their parents, and all that. And, and that's, that's what, that's what I'm trying, trying to fix.
And to be clear, uh, Mr. Hill, that's, that's no, uh, that's no- nothing against you, but I hate to put you in the position of having to speak for the superintendent, right?
I think the superintendent should be here to weigh in.
Also, I mean, I mean, to, to that end, staff should be able to talk to staff about this, the work this stuff allows. There's that in our, in our, our staff.
She's been involved in.
Right. Ms. Reynolds?
Um, I just wanted to make, you commented on Janie Howard Wilson, being under capacity. Their district map, they have to follow the se- or they are currently following the same district map that they were in two thousand two, when they went charter? Is that?
So, so their, their enrollment preference
Sorry.
Their enrollment preference zone, which is, for la- I mean, that's what we use to describe it, is, is the Lake Wales area, as was defined by their, by their Lake Wales High School area zone, within the elementary schools, they can move students around, and I know they have in the past, um, however they wish to do so. Uh, the zone exists only to determine where the, where the preference, when we do that weighted lottery, um, are you a, a Lake Wales address student, formerly zoned to Lake Wales High School? Then yes, you fall in the preference. Are you outside of that zone? Then no, you don't. That's the reason for that zone.
And more so, for the elementary schools? For the elementary schools, is there, are there lines as to whether their preference is Babson Park, or Janie Howard Wilson, or one of-
That would be up to Lake Wales, to the charter school, as long as they don't, I mean, and even then, they could come to us and say, hey, we, we want to change this, we want to stretch it out, or whatever they want to do. But right now, my understanding is they are using those former zones, but that's their decision in terms of, that, that I'm sure is driven by their transportation. So, for example, if a school was under-selected as an elementary school in a charter zone, and a school was over-selected, there's nothing to prevent the charter school group from changing that zone.
Have we mentioned, I mean, we have several areas that have been rezoned based on growth over the past almost two decades now. Is that something that we've mentioned to them?
I know, I personally had that conversation. Um, and I think Mr. Hill and I communicated with Janie Howard Wilson not that long ago, about that very issue, that, that there are some of their schools where they're turning away students because they're overcrowded. And our recommendation to them was that they take those students or change their zone.
We need to do something that's proactive. I mean, that's, it's, it's a very difficult situation in Lake Wales. And I think as a, as a school district, it's important to continue this conversation, because we really need to, to offer some sort of, of solution to this, what is a real serious problem. So, uh, Ms. Warbington, could we add that as old business, please, to the next work session agenda? And, and we'll continue talking about that. I know some of the board members, uh, indicated that they had some things they wanted to discuss, so I want to get the board comments before we, before we finish up. Ms. Townsend?
So what do we agree? So we're moving forward with the Lake Wales High's zone, correct?
Yes, well, yes.
Putting, putting that on, on the, on the web-
Yes, yes, everybody's in agreement, that's a good thing to do.
And, and are we too going to put the word out to our high schools? Let's just say to our high schools, to Haynes City, to Barto, to, to, to Winter Haven? Um, are you aware that there's a, can, can be, is-
Well, we, I'm in agreement with that. You're in agreement, I think Ms. Miller's in agreement with that. But I think we need the superintendent here to figure out what we're going to do.
I was going to say, I, I, when it comes to setting protocols and practices for our schools, I think we
We, we-
So, 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 well, so when we revisit that the next time?
Yes.
I'm not, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make sure what we actually did today.
Yes, what, what we did was had a substantive conversation to continue with the superintendent here, so that we can nail down what we can and can't do.
All right. And I just, again, would love to have the adults who run both of these dis- districts for the board to talk to one another construct- constructively, because I don't, just don't think we do right now. And, uh, that's just a general wish, so I will put that out.
Okay. Ms. Cunningham?
And to that end, we, um, sorry, um, I'll be brief. To that end, would it be possible for our chairman to schedule the next, used to be roundtable, now what do we call it? Extended work session, we said?
Extended work.
The superintendent agreed to last time? That we would have that work session, like nine to twelve, or whatever? Take a break for lunch, and come back and have the extended? To me, that would be an opportunity to invite, perhaps, some key people from Lake Wales, us, some staff, to really sit down and talk about it, a couple hours. I mean, this is not something that's going to be done in twenty minutes. Yeah, we've done one piece. But I think sitting together around the table, cup of coffee, what can we do? How can we make this work? But I do agree, it should be with superintendent being here, and she's agreeable to the extended work sessions happening after lunch, as we agreed to last time. So that, I think, would be a great way to kick that off, quite frankly. But I'm saying with staff here, both sides, and allow them to choose who they want to bring, and not adversarial, let's just talk, like you said. What can we do? How can we make, here's our uncomfort, what's your uncomfortability? How can we meet halfway? I just think it's long overdue, and we're now to a point with us that we've got a mechanism for that, outside of a formal work session, if you will. It's the extended, and perhaps that might be a good one. It doesn't have to be this month, next month, whenever the board chair and superintendent feels suited.
Okay. We, we can add that to our next extended work session.
Can we have Susan add that to the topic list that she's collecting, just so it's recorded?
There we go.
Right.
Perfect.
And, yes, absolutely. Okay. Board comments? Thank you very much. Board comments? Ms. Cunningham?
Okay. Just wanted to, a follow-up. I know Tender did a great job of sending us the, um, exit surveys. Um, I was kind of taken aback that there's really no meat in this. I don't know what, no, it just says reasons for voluntary separation, and they chose out of a list of fifteen, unless there's something more. I printed everything you sent me, and all they do is click on one out of, I don't know, twelve, fifteen? There's not why, what happened, issues with the district, uns- you know what I'm saying? I mean, these are carte blanche to me.
Also, what we did is we looked at Seminole County, Lake County, Orange, Palm Beach, Duval, Broward, I think. And so literally, we took the best parts of each of their surveys and put it together. And that's what we, um, came up with with programmers. If you'd like more, then that's something we can look at.
Well, I mean, again, I'm not trying to create more work for anybody, but to me, this didn't tell me anything. This told me this person had six out of fifteen reasons to leave, nine why they left. Truly. I, I mean, I don't know who this is, because names are marked out, but I was like, okay, family, personal, lack of opportunity for advancement, stress on the job, frequency of pay, and lack of student discipline. So my question would be to that person. Yes. Yeah. I know.
But you want to know, like, if it's at school, what was the problem with the discipline, or whatever?
Right. Well, in other words, if I'm a teacher, and I'm leaving, and I put lack of student discipline, how can we help address it? I, I don't know what happened in her or his situation that led to that, where we as an organization can say, how can we do better? What was it? I mean, I'm not expecting them to write about individual students. I get hip, I get all of the stuff. I'm just saying, this just kind of left me, like, I don't know anymore now than before I read this.
Well, we use it, like, as I said, at the other work session, we provided to, um, the regionals, and then the regionals will sit and talk to their principals about it. So let's say we get ten resignations from, um-
Whatever. School A.
School A.
Yep.
Forty-Seminary.
Yep.
And so, um, with those ten resignations, then you'll go, they go through the data, and then they look at the data with your principals. So if it is, let's say, a student discipline, then they will talk about, well, what's going on, Dr. Yates, with your student discipline here at Forty-Seminary?
So you only do it specifically to the school?
It can't, it can't be brought down by the-
And that's more school-focused, not general?
Correct.
Okay, well, none of that is noted in here. Let me just say, if you were to give this to somebody else, I would have never known that unless I asked you today. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And if there's a problem at, you know, school A, hey, could B, or C, or D, is there something that we're doing in general in that discipline area that was a reason that the straw, you know, that broke the camel's back? Is that the re- if so, oh my gosh, we need to know about it. Not we, as in me, our staff, to make it better, because we don't want to lose. The investment in losing somebody who's invested in our school district is way more expensive than hiring a new person. So we really need to get at the reason why, in my opinion, it's one out of seven, why people are leaving. And to me, this told me nothing. Nothing. It's just, you know, one out of fifteen. So anyways, I'd like, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but I wish there was better data on that, that we could actually address. Do your regionals compile data and say, out of the last ten in my area, here's the main, one of the top two reasons that folks are leaving? Do we get anything like that?
Well, we provide them the data, yes. We provide them the data.
I guess it's for a conversation outside of here. We'll follow up, because I'm, I don't think I'm being clear.
Ms. Reynolds?
I don't have mine in front of me. I don't have mine in front of me, is there a section, I know you mentioned last time that because it's identified by who it is, a lot of times they won't give you specific examples because they don't want it to ever come up again. But is there somewhere that they can optionally give more information, like an additional comment section or something like that? Or is that something that we could add, just additional comments of the area?
We could add it, however, right now with our staff shortage, I think that's the issue, so remember, this was our first time doing the exit survey. So, we looked at other districts, we compiled the best, and then we thought, well, let's see how this goes. From there, we received quite a bit of data, and I think to date, we have about five hundred people that have completed the exit survey. And so, in looking at that, yes, we can provide, or yes, we can tweak it as needed, but we just, right now, we're kind of hands-wringing about staff, I think, unfortunately.
Ms. Whitney?
Well, it's just a, don't tell, yeah, because I read that, like, you had twenty-eight pages of non-instructional changes, fifty pages of instructional changes, like, that's a huge amount of.
So, anytime an action is done on any.
I know, that's what I mean, I'm trying to say, that's a lot of tracking and.
So, those aren't all resignations?
I know that, but if you look, it'll say replacement, and then you got to track where they went to, and, you know, and I actually tried to find some of those people down on another work session to try to see where the heck they went to. It's mind-boggling, the tracking, but, but to follow up on Ms. Cunningham, you know, I doubt you're gonna be able to put this, like, twenty pre-K kids crammed in a room with no air conditioning. And, you know, that kind of thing is what I get complaints about, yeah, they're gonna walk out, so.
So, we, we had discipline at four, is the board okay with pushing that back to four-thirty, there are no parents, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Hill, would you?
I.
Notify your folks?
So, we do need a few minutes in discipline, I, so, I think four-thirty is fine.
Okay, okay, Ms. Cunningham?
I have another item, we received a payroll audit findings from Ms. Matthews, and I appreciate the time and effort, I know that's a lot of work, twenty-six or twenty-eight schools, I mean, that's a lot. But is it commitment from the board that we started several years back to audit them consistently? I did notice, you know, certainly two of our areas are greater than in the past, and three, four. So, right, two areas went down and four areas went up in the numbers. And so, I know we don't do the same schools year after year, but it's just a concern, and I know there's turnovers at each of our schools, I get all of that, but it's just kind of, I was really surprised. I, I had hoped to see the numbers continuing to go down, and I see them go up, I mean, two, three, four of the six areas, percentages.
Two areas that are higher than the prior two years.
Prior two years.
Yeah, but there's a couple of other areas that may be higher than one of those years, yes.
Yes, right, yeah. So, I, and again, no reflection on you and doing your job and presenting it, it's just a bit surprising.
Sure.
You know, I kind of was hoping that as we do these year after year, these, these findings, the percentages of them would go down and not up. But I do know last year, we only did eight, and this year, we did twenty-six, so.
Before that, we did nineteen, so it varies.
It does.
Um, we have about twenty-five schools left that have never had an audit.
Okay.
So, I think once we have audited every school, and we start our repeat audits.
Yes, then we'll be able to see it, okay.
I hope to see that reflection in the results as well.
Yeah, down, right, that's, that's what I would hope, but anyways.
And, of course, you know, we have the training that we make mandatory now, and we have, you know, hundred percent compliance with that. So, we've actually just pushed that out for this year, so they're all doing their training now online, so we hope that that helps because it has all this information.
And maybe in here was, and I don't know, when you look at the deficiencies and what was reported, can you put a dollar estimate on that? Not today, but at some point, I'd like to know what that's costing us in each of those three years, and then when we complete them next year, it'd be nice to know. Because, I mean, our salaries are a huge part of our operational budget, so.
Ms. Cunningham, I'm not sure that a dollar amount would be applicable, because we're talking about compliance issues.
Okay.
And so, we're talking about making sure that we're following the law and our policies and things of that nature.
Right. Right.
So, in some areas, yes, unreported absences is an example, so that would be dollars.
Yes. Right. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, that's what I meant, where, where it makes sense, where it makes sense if you could put a dollar figure on it, the next time you report it would be appreciated.
Some of the other things may not be. Sure. Okay.
I think, Ms. Miller, you had your hand up?
I, I just, I, is.
I'm done, thank you, you're sweet.
I'm gonna make Ms. Cunningham's. I just wanted to add to the next meeting, a request to talk further about IRIS and have some people in here that can help us with this. I know there's been a lot of dollars spent in staff time to create the program, and for those of us that are using it frequently, I know at one work session, it was requested a few things, like to notify of something that was a pertinent request. Because not all requests are working on that, it's a great data collection, which I enjoy seeing other people's requests, because I know sometimes they overlap. But there's been some issues of, of long-term responses, or somebody hit a button that closed it, and there's no way to say that the click, that the response given was sufficient for the person that asked. So, there's some things I think we need to talk about, I just met someone again yesterday who was on the board, so for the last two decades, this is at least the third attempt. So, I'm not gonna do a public request and ask for the dollars spent on trying to create some email management program, I just want it to be efficient if we're going to do it. I don't know why it never lasted when they were introduced before, but if we're gonna use it, it needs to be not only easy for the staff and courteous to their time, but you have at least two business owners and other people that work full-time jobs, I need it to work for me as well. And sometimes the responses, if they're delayed, or the information given is even what I asked, and I, there's no way to respond without creating another request. So, I think if we just have time to talk about it with the people that are working on it, we can iron that stuff out to make sure that's effective for the people using it. And Fortney probably wins the award for using it the most. Ms. Fortney, you had input, because you waved at me. Oh, okay, that's, I'm done with my comments, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just, I do like it, but either I'm the only one with any questions, or, because I only see my name popping up half the time, most of the time. And I, I already spoke with Mr. Hill about this, I would like to know who answered me, and I thought I did see that at one point in time, then I couldn't find it again. Because if it's okay, could we email a follow-up question, or do I need to create, I've just been copying and pasting the whole thing again? And the only reason I knew Dr. Aches answered one, I think, is because he misspelled my name again, so.
Sorry, you spelled it the right way.
We start right off the record, please.
Yeah. So, you, you know, I, I'm just saying that, and then it's too late, like, I, I had some focus, people wanted to go to the focus groups, and I never could get any information on that. You know, especially about things that are going on in our, in our schools that people reach out to me, and that's the only way I had to communicate that, you know?
So, the answer is yes, we'll, we'll ask the superintendent if we can have maybe some staff to kind of help us with that and, and with questions, unless you'd like.
Can we put, yeah, well.
It's up to you.
We got a little bit of time, but Tina, would you like to, do you have any updates or comments based on what your concern is?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry.
But I, well, I, what my preference would be that we, we put it on the next work session agenda, so that we give staff an opportunity and to, to kind of give them some thought, and if you don't mind, if you could send in your concerns and questions and then.
Sure, do you want me to use IRIS? Okay, I'm just kidding.
Well, just, Mr. Wilson, the requests are forwarded to the appropriate cabinet or facility, and I finally replied back to whoever said, so that's no, you know, is that a no, or, it was really a no or a yes?
I understand that the question goes to the, to an administrative secretary who decides who it goes to, the answer is given, it's, it is confirmed or approved by a cabinet member, then it is returned. I have an issue with that entire process, but if that's the one we're gonna use, we need to talk about how it's gonna be more effective, and they're gonna identify who's answering, so we can follow up. But I think you're right, I think time in a work session would probably help with that.
Yeah, okay.
So, we can make the modifications, I don't know if you've, and maybe I'm seeing it and you don't, but I see who answered the question, if you search and you look at all the completed responses. If that's not showing up on your end, it's something you want added, I mean, that, that, those are certainly.
It might say, no, because at first, I thought I saw it, but then I didn't, like, I thought I knew who was responding.
Well, I, you know, obviously, it's a work in progress, so we can certainly.
Absolutely, I mean, these are.
Listen to the concerns and work through them and from all sides of the equation.
Mr. Hill, can I just make, if there is a pertinent issue, like, we had an issue with the traffic, and the person approached two board members about some signs not being there, it was days later, so the calls kept coming in, the traffic is really bad on this road, somebody's gonna get hurt. I will not use IRIS for those things, there are things that will be direct phone calls or emails.
Right.
Because it is not pertinent to constituents, something's gonna happen, and it's gonna be, oh, we had to wait six days for a response. And to me, as an elected board member, my constituents are not okay with that kind of delay, and I've not met another board that uses this system with this kind of response. But I know we're working on it, I'm not gonna ask how many hours we've spent the last two times this tried to be implemented for twenty years, but if we're going to use it, it needs to work well.
I think we all agree to that, you know, we, we certainly want it to work well and be efficient.
Ms. Townsend?
Yeah, sort of to that end, I tried to get into IRIS today to.
I can't get in.
And I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get in, but I had a question, so, so I have an unrelated question. I don't, I don't think IRIS is a primarily a technology issue, notwithstanding the fact that I couldn't get into it today, it's really an administrative issue and how we deal with that. The, the question I have is totally different, it was what I asked, which is about, apparently, apparently, we have a, an employee who's got a young child who's very sick and out, out there in the world. And a bunch of their co, co, coworkers want to share sick, sick time, sick bank time with, with them, I'm not sure what the rules are, can, what's the?
So, essentially, you have, we have an employee whose child is very sick, they would like to, they are at a school site, other teachers would like to donate time to that employee because she has now since run out of time. Unfortunately, our policies don't necessarily allow us to donate time to non-family members.
We used to, we used to.
So, the policy is forty-one thirty, if I'm not mistaken, it's in sick leave, and so, it specifically says that one person, just, just the governor right here. So, if Aches and I were married hypothetically, I could donate, again, just right here, I could donate my leave to him as a family member. If he were my brother, I can donate leave to him as a family member, however, just as a colleague, I cannot donate leave to him. And a part of that, even though Florida law does allow it, some districts do allow it, part of the issue is, and Jason can speak more about this as well, a part of the issue is, what happens if everyone donates leave to, to Dr. Aches, and then he doesn't use all that leave? How then are they going to account to get the leave back? So, then does Mrs. Miller get two hours back, does Mrs. Fields get three hours back, does Mrs. Cunningham get certain hours back? And so, it's an accounting piece as well, but what I did offer is that they do have the sick leave bank that's available, I send out that information, I think, twice a year for all employees to participate in. Just in case you do have a catastrophic illness, what it requires is that you just donate your, a portion of your sick leave to that bank, and then if you do have an illness and you need to use it, need to use the bank, then you get paid time off as much as you need to leave, or use during that, during your leave.
So, to clarify on that.
There's an endpoint on that.
This person could, could access through the sick bank, like, like people could, no?
If you didn't give, you can't access.
If you're a member of the sick leave bank, right?
You have to give time to get.
Yeah.
Yes, you have to give time.
It's not much, hey, it saved me a catastrophic, yeah.
All right, well, I mean, somebody like, likely to come tonight about that, just, just FYI, when did we, when did we make that?
We used to be able to do that at one point.
I mean, I, I under, I mean, maybe there's a.
Not my thirty-first years.
Maybe there's a, maybe there's a, a way in which we, we, we can structure it, so it's like a person at a time gives up.
I think, based on my understanding, and Jason, just correct me if I'm wrong, I think they've looked at a lot of the options, Mr. Townsend, and they just determined that the amount of staff that we have is currently not feasible for us to do.
Who's they?
Well, you, you get into complicated issue, it's, you get into complicated issues about if, if I am in a miss, rates of pay, this all has to be, this all has to be closely tracked, because we're talking about people donating hours that then can get paid out at the end, all that, that all has to be tracked. And so, it's an extremely complicated issue, which we can talk about at a later time, but there are several issues that come into play about payouts and making sure that if a person is donating time, what happens with that donated time, like Ted talked about, what happens, it goes back to those employees, and it's an extremely complicated issue that we can definitely talk about, but it's a, it's a complicated issue.
Well, I mean, rather than thinking around the sick bank, why don't we think around, what do we do when we have a, a child with a catastrophic, like, a, like, maybe, like, instead of building around the sick, sick, sick bank, think about a package of how we can respond if a child has a, you know, I mean, it's, it's sort of six, one half dozen, the, the other. But it seems like in this kind of situation, there ought to be some common sense mechanism, if people want to do it, to be able to do it, and I get all the accounting stuff, but, but let's, yeah, anyway, that, that, that would probably have to be bargained, would that be bargained?
Yeah.
No?
Not sure. Well, and, I mean, if, people, folks are, tend to be very generous, but what happens is, after it's over and there's, there's time left, everybody's gonna want their time back, right? And it's all at different rates.
Well, and that's, and that's one of the things I'm saying, like, why don't we, like, stipulate it to one person at a time, so like, everybody's not.
For one week.
Right.
How do other districts do it?
Right, why don't, yeah, yeah, I mean, why don't we research what other districts do and?
And maybe have an extended work session again.
Mr. Peron. Mr. Peron.
He wrote directly reports to Mr. Peron, not necessarily to me.
He, he heard stuff, see?
Yeah. How other districts use sick leave gifts, if someone in the school or the site has a catastrophic illness and people want to give sick time.
It's, it's different, I think the smaller districts find it easier to do, we looked at SAP, it would be very difficult in a district our size, we have looked at it and will continue to, but it is allowable. There was a change in the law a number of years ago, we just haven't been able to do that. It's a lot of trying to track when someone donates hours, you know, and then the person, they donate ten, or ten days, and then the person's out eight, then you have to take those hours back, and they're different hours, everybody works in different, I mean, it's, it's, it's a major undertaking, but we have looked at it, we've talked about it, and we will continue to. But SAP, and as large as it is, we, we can probably do it, it's just take a lot of programming and trying to track, tracking it is the hardest.
Okay, sounds like we, it's something we want to continue to explore, but I think in the meantime, we've got a little bit of a challenge with this.
Yeah, what's, what's the best option for this, for the person, so, I mean, maybe.
But if they, if they didn't participate, then they're not gonna be eligible to get anything out of it, right?
Right.
I mean, they can't join it after the fact.
Right, right.
Right, and one of the things that we can do, which is completely up to us, is look at times in which we open the sick leave bank, that may be something that will allow some employees that need time, especially for catastrophic illnesses, to be able to save up some time, and maybe then they can donate that month of sick leave to the bank and then get some leave back. That may be a better way to address it.
Who, who would be the best person for the specific person to talk to about, like, who's, who's the best option for this person?
Sick leave bank is in my office.
They should have fifteen days to join.
Yes, you have to have a number of days to join, yes.
Right.
Oh, wow.
Just throwing that out there.
Right.
Yeah.
I was looking for my, I just sent out sick leave bank enrollment forms.
Okay, Ms. Miller?
I'll report it to them.
I have one other thing, are you finished, Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
This is for Wes, which we've, we've emailed before, but then I got a news story sent to me during the meeting, that I live in disability world, where a lot of families contact me about certain situations, and one of them is children with seizures that are on the medical cannabis through the state of compassionate care registry. And I was told that as of December first, we have to have some, other districts have to have a plan in place for these people. Currently, the few students we have using this have to be taken off campus, administered, taken back to campus. I was told by December first, we have to have some kind of draft policy that has to be approved by the state by December thirty-first.
That is a, a good question, and there has been considerable traffic going back and forth on that.
Okay.
There is still a disconnect between federal law and the state law.
So, the state's telling us.
There's also a disconnect between the constitutional amendment and the state statute.
Okay.
The state, the constitutional amendment specifically excluded schools from that provision, so there, but there is a statute that now says you have to do it, as you might imagine, are the. As you might imagine, the folks at Neola are on top of that. There was a new communication from them this morning, expressing, once again, their opinion that there is a, a conflict between this, that might rise to the level of being a constitutional conflict. But, I think districts, there are at least two districts who have adopted policies, they don't reflect, I think, the constitutional amendment directly, but they have adopted policies, we are in that process, Wendy Dodge is at the pointy end of it, and working with Neola to do that. And as, as soon as we have a, a proposed solution, we will bring it to you. But, but your, your funding, federal funding in this district is contingent on drug-free schools, and, and the federal statute on drug-free does not line up neatly with the, with the Florida statute.
What happens if we don't meet the requirement of December thirty-first at the DOE?
We're going, we're going to have something done.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know whether you will like it, I don't know whether...
I personally am not on the compassionate care registry, so...
Yeah, I, I don't know whether the, whether the state will like it, but I have a, I have a high degree of confidence that we will have something done. And it may be something that says, you know, here, we, we agree to do everything the statute requires to do, however, nothing, nothing herein shall be construed in such a way as to violate federal law and put the district's funding at risk.
Can you send the two policies that have been created from the other districts in the state?
Yeah, I think, I think, I believe Pasco and Broward have, have done that, and I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But, yes, it's, it's a problem, it's a big problem, it's a problem for everybody.
Okay, Ms. Townsend?
Speaking of constitutional amendments, could someone explain to me, I, we're in a very strange, awful situation here. How Marcy's Law prevents us from speaking about the potential existence of a person who may or may not have died recently? I mean, what, what is, I am baffled by this. Is it Marcy's Law, the twenty-eighteen constitutional amendment, it's like a victims' rights thing?
Yes.
I mean, there, there was, you know, there was a very high-profile killing about a week ago. The victims have not been publicly identified, are they never going to be publicly identified? Is that, I mean, do we...
To release their names, next of kin has to get permission, I believe, is that...
What if there is no next of kin?
That's, I think, where...
That's where we are.
Okay. Okay.
Wes?
That is a question to which I do not know the answer, I will be happy to, to, to find out what I can.
It's very unfortunate.
Well, let me just say, let me, let me, let me just say, the things it is preventing from happening, if, if anybody's listening to this, are explicitly in conflict with what the statute is intending to do. Like, it's intending to be a comfort to victims, to whatever, like, this makes it difficult to set up accounts, to fundraise for, to do memorials for. It's a bizarre Kafka-like thing, that I don't know what role we'd have in it, but having been out of town for four or five days, I, it's, I'm just baffled and sad about it, so...
Any further board comments?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Matt?
Ms. Portis, what, what is the status on all of that, the teachers transferred, and the state not liking our grant proposals? Do you have any update for that?
Certainly, well, actually, our assessment and accountability and evaluation team, A and B, and Riley Hawkins and her team, together an awesome proposal, that thus far, the state has accepted. We are using some other measures other than the SAO, so, the state was not in agreement with us using SAOs to provide a bonus. So, we've been, or, Mrs. Yoker and I have been in contact, we're actually gonna do a video probably sometime next week, as there are going to be some changes to that bonus program, based on the new measure that A and B has come up with, or has to agree with. So, I think right now, we're moving forward, payment should be made ideally January, yeah, January thirtieth and June thirtieth.
Well, my, my question is, are there still gonna be schools, you know how, I feel now like I used to feel about kids, knowing more than I did about how the school's running? Now, I feel like teachers know more than I do about what's happening out in the, in the real world. But, but some of my friends at a couple different schools said that they're not gonna get any money now that they already moved schools, and they were wanting to know if they could transfer out of those schools. Is there any way to do another transfer window?
I'm unsure that I understand the complaint.
Like, the, the bonus money...
If you're at Philable Bryant, and you were there, you will receive some funds on June, on January thirtieth, based on either a state fam or the new measure that A and B generated.
Okay.
Does our new measure, I'm sorry, there...
Well, I, I just...
I just don't, I don't really wanna say it publicly, because we've not yet done the...
I, I'm sitting here trying to figure out how to talk to you, so...
And I'll help you, I'll find if that's okay.
There we go, that's great, all right, that's all I needed from you. And then, I just had one other thing, y'all, I am inundated, and Mr. Hill, this is right up your alley, with emails, I've printed them all, but this, I'm looking at a PBIS, it's, it's nine pages long, a behavior plan that teachers have to do, and then, a daily lesson plan, has four pages of PBIS for JAMS put in it.
Can you, can I see the specific one that you're going to, and work on it with you?
All right. And then, I just wanted to read this publicly, because this is the kind of stuff I get. I literally walked out of this, I can't say the word, the other day, I was crying and hyperventilating. The math coach stopped me before I got all the way to my car, I was out of the gate. I do not want to go back, but I know I have to, no joy, joy is gone, death to joy. From now on, they will not be getting any of their required paperwork from me. I will be teaching my way, and if they don't like it, they can fire me, because I am done. That's why we're leaving, losing teachers, and I'm gonna leave it at that.
Any, any additional comments? Apparently, we do have a parent for a discipline, a discipline. Okay, so, could we make our way down to the boardroom?
Sure.
Would that be okay, everybody okay with that?
You want us to take the laptop with us, that, or you want to give Jud some time to four-thirty?
Yeah, we, we, we'll hold it at four-thirty, because we need to give him some time.
You're right.